Our July 11, 2023, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. We are broadcasting this meeting live on Pacific Coast TV's website as well as local Channel 27. A few brief public comment etiquette items to review for those that would like to have public comment in person as well as on the Zoom platform. The Planning Commission Chair will open up the general public comment section of the agenda. At that time, community members are welcome to speak on any items that are not listed on the agenda for this evening. For the specific items listed on the agenda, there will be public comment opportunities during the discussion of those specific items. Three minutes will be given to those who comment. We will begin with the in-person comments first, and then we will move to the attendees via Zoom. Those wanting to speak in person, I will recognize you with the speaker card that you have turned in. And for virtual, you will raise your raise hand icon, and I will go in the order that they come in via Zoom. Please make sure that you state your name, and yet you speak clearly into the microphone for the record and for our public to hear. If you're dialing from a telephone via Zoom, please push star six to raise and unraise your hand, and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. After the meeting, or after the meeting and packet was distributed, there was some correspondence that went out, and it is published on the this evening's agenda on the website, as well was emailed to each planning commissioner and shared with them. I would like to remind staff and our planning commission to please speak into the mics so that we can make sure that it goes on to the live TV and our listeners can hear from there. Thank you for your patience, and I will now hand the meeting over to our acting chair, Gossett, to officially begin this evening's meeting.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Gossett. I am the vice chair of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. Today is July 11. Welcome to everyone in the audience and on Zoom. I'm the acting chair for the evening. Chair Hernandez is going to participate via Zoom. So if we could start with the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll take roll call.
Okay. So we have one of our planning commissioners is telecommuting from afar, so we want to need to go through some etiquette. So prior to our roll call, I would like to make it clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of the city commission or the planning commission meeting is conducted within government code 54953B, as the planning commissioner Hernandez is at. And you noted on, it's noted on the agenda that he is at the Fairmont Miramar Hotel, 101 Willshire Boulevard, Santa Monica, in the lobby of the hotel this evening. Planning Commissioner Hernandez is participating via Zoom and has speaker and audio, and he's in ordinance with the Brown Act. Each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for the meeting. We've gotten notice of it, and we've noticed it at that location. I would now like to do roll call. Commissioner Ruddock is absent this evening. Commissioner Johannes?
Here.
Commissioner Gorn?
Here.
Vice Chair and Acting Chair Gossett?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Okay. We have four commissioners present this evening. I would like to now request that Commissioner, Planning Commissioner, and Chair Hernandez respond to the following questions. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear the proceedings up until this time in this moment?
Yes, I was.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Is your location responsibly accessible to the public, such as any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes, it is, and I can see the front desk of the Fairmont Hotel in front of me, and behind me is the lobby of the Fairmont Hotel Miramar in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public with you there currently?
I do not see any members of the public who are participating in the meeting.
Thank you. I would now like to ask any member of the planning commission that is here in person at this time, such time, are you not able to hear Commissioner Hernandez clearly?
I can hear him.
You can hear him. Okay. Hearing that there is no comment and that they agree they can hear, the record should reflect that all planning commissioners, members present have indicated that they were able to hear Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Hernandez. I would next request that any commissioner speak up at this time if he or she has any reason to believe, based on the voice recognition or otherwise, that the person representing himself to as Planning Commissioner Hernandez is not truly so. Hearing none, no comment, the record should reflect that no commissioner has expressed doubt that the planning commissioner is the person participating in the teleconference with commissioner members present here. I would now like to advise the commission that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of the meeting must be taken by a roll call vote. And now I will proceed. It asks for a roll call vote to acknowledge it. Are you, we don't need to.
Sure.
Okay. Let's just take in a vote to acknowledge that you know that there's, we have a commissioner that's teleconferencing, and that we will take roll call votes. Okay. So Commissioner, Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Gossett?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay. We've all approved or acknowledged. You may proceed.
Okay, so we will look at the approval of the minutes from June 13. And I would like to just make one note that I did not attend that meeting, and it does say that I led the pledge of allegiance, so we might want to strike that.
I apologize.
Otherwise, I cannot vote on the minutes.
Oops. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have enough? I don't know. Yeah, we do.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I did not attend that meeting either.
Okay. So then maybe we don't have a quorum.
We're going to have to hold that. I didn't realize that we are going to be short of planning commissioner, so we will just.
Move that to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want to vote on that?
So at this point, we are going to move to item 1A. Well, actually, I'm sorry, I skipped an item. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on anything that is not on the agenda?
I don't see anyone, and I don't see anyone in Zoom as well.
Okay. Then we will move on to item 1A. And before we even do that, I would like to ask if anyone has any ex parte communication regarding this matter. I would like to disclose an ex parte. I did visit the site this evening before the meeting, and I met with Bob, and I toured the site. He showed me the area in the back, and he showed me how the fire department can access his building if needed. And he also showed me the new driveway that he, actually, the driveway he removed. So I just would like to disclose that so all the other commissioners are aware of that. Thank you.
I would like to disclose, I have not had any ex parte communications on this item with the applicant. I do know the applicant, and I am a customer of BK Motors, but I receive no special economic benefit or privileges as a result of that relationship. So I just wanted to fully disclose that. And I have had previously ex parte communications on the earlier version of this project before it came to the planning commission previously. But as I said, I have no economic, I have not had any subsequent ex parte communications, and I have no economic interest in this project or with the applicant.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I believe we're at the point where we can move on to the public hearing for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, senior planner with the city. And this project, it started out in 2018. It was originally a coastal development permit, a use permit, and architectural design to convert a paved area that was used for outdoor storage of boats and RVs to a mini storage facility using these custom-made storage containers. And that was approved at the time. I would note, the reason why we're here tonight is there was a condition, number E.2, that required an additional use permit review and approval five years after it was approved. And that condition specifically is related to the use permit, does not include the coastal development permit or the architectural design. And so just for a little background, the use permit generally deals with operational issues, and the idea was this was sort of a new kind of project for the city, and we weren't sure, there are some residences next door, how much noise it generates, would it be a magnet for nuisances, that sort of thing. And also, we were still fairly early in the process of updating our land use plan and had not undertaken our housing element update. So there was some uncertainty, this is a pretty big piece of land if it was going to be designated for some other use. And so I think just out of abundance of caution, we included this condition to require the applicant to come back in five years, and we'd take another look at it. And these, not all use permits have a condition like that. Like I said, this was one where everybody was just, had a few questions about it. So the site, I think most people probably know where it is, BK Motors, right on Highway 1, next to the Strawflower Shopping Center. These sort of grayish rectangles, those are the storage containers there on the rear of the lot. Up front, this is the building where the car dealership is, there's auto detailing in this business here. Up here, this is an older wood frame building called the Little Yellow House locally. That was used for private community meetings, that sort of thing. And then, just for full disclosure, I'm going to mention that that business sort of shut down during COVID, and the applicant did approach the city with an idea of converting that building to a bed and breakfast. We do not have an application for that. It's not on the agenda tonight. I just don't want to come back six months from now with an application and have people ask, why didn't I tell you when it was coming? So that's, that's all we really can disclose about that today. This is kind of zoomed out a little bit, and you can see, this is the backside of the shopping center here, it's kind of dead space, there's dumpsters, loading docks. This is McDonald's, this is their drive-through aisle here, highways here. So from a neighborhood compatibility, for the most part, it's really a pretty good location. Our concern was with the houses here along Belleville. And also, we, back in 2018, we talked to the sheriff's department, and they did mention that they'd had some problems in this area behind Strawflower. We didn't want any of that expanding over here, and we, we did accommodate the sheriff's office. We were thinking about putting in a wood fence there for screening, and they said they, they really preferred chain leak so they could see through there. They do patrol behind the shopping center, so that's what's there today. This is a bird's eye view of the shipping containers. And again, you can see, this is the backside of the shopping center where, you know, there's not a lot of eyes on the street and not much, you know, activity there. This is what used to be there. It was a storage space for boats and RVs. These are kind of neat, they're custom designed with these roll-up doors. You can have different size floor area to rent out. They bring in the storage, they're steel storage containers and just set them down on pressure-treated lumber. So there's really no construction, there's no utility hookups, not very disruptive as it would be building new buildings to the neighborhood. And also, someday, if it goes away, it's relatively easy to remove them. One of the things we're concerned about was the view from Highway 1, now that they're in place. It's pretty well concealed by the buildings out in front. You can see, this is the side of what I was calling the Little Yellow House, this is the detailing shop. This is on the adjacent property, there's a floor supply store. And there are a few places where you can kind of glimpse the storage containers through, in between the buildings, but it's pretty limited. So in getting ready for this hearing to take a look at whether or not we should extend the use permit, the first step was to go through permit compliance, make sure that everything had been operated the way it was supposed to. There was a condition of approval to remove one of the driveways that really wasn't being used, primarily for the garbage truck would pull in, pick up the dumpster, and then back out on the Highway 1. So requirement was to remove that driveway, and then relocate the dumpster to around behind the buildings. For the wooden fence that separates this property from the residences on Belleville, we had asked that, it was a sort of a typical wood fence with spaces in between the vertical slats, that those be covered up just to provide more soundproofing. And it was, the fence had been, it extends all the way down to the end of the block behind Safeway. And some of it was one height, some was another. We did ask him to increase the height of the sections on his property a little bit. So all of those have been complied with, no outstanding matters that need to be taken care of. This is what the driveway looked like before. Here's the dumpster and the foreground here. The requirement was to remove these bollards, the raised yellow rumble streets here. Extend the asphalt, make it a level, smooth surface through here, and then remove the driveway going down here, and then put in landscaping. And today, all of that's been done. Some of this may look a little haphazard, and I want to explain that's deliberate. One thing, and also, there was two steps. One was to close the driveway with a gate or a chain, and then in two years to remove the driveway. The two years fell right in the middle of the COVID lockdown, and it's also entirely within the Caltrans right-of-way, and it requires separate permitting from Caltrans. So it did drag on for a while to get it done, but under the circumstances, I think that was unavoidable. The other piece is the city's Highway 1 North Safety Improvements Project was working its way through the system. And when their drawings were first put together, they assumed this driveway was going to stay there. And interestingly, our project, Highway 1 North, ends sort of right in the middle of this driveway. So we had talked about extending the concrete curb across here and removing this asphalt. And it just seemed like when the city started construction, we would probably wind up tearing all that work out or damaging it. And so we compromised with these bollards, and then when the city does come through with our project, this area up here is going to be a bioswale, this is going to be some new landscaping. It's easier to just clean this up when the city's doing the rest of the work. So the plan is that these bollards will go away, and either the bioswale will be extended a little bit south or the landscaping north, and it should be cleaned up and looking like a finished product then. Here's the dumpster, it's been moved around behind the building, it's entirely closed with wooden fences. I think you can see the roof of the McDonald's in the background here. This is a little bit hard to see, but these lighter colored vertical strips, that's where they've added new slats to cover up all the slots in between the boards. To date, we haven't received any noise complaints from the neighbors, so it's To date, we haven't received any noise complaints from the neighbors, so it seems to be working. We did notice this hearing, just like a new project, there was notice in the newspaper, we sent notices to the neighbors, posted a notice on the site. Haven't received any comments based on that notice. We did a review of city records, our code enforcement files, we've received no complaints about the operation since it started. No complaints from the Sheriff's Department about problems back there. So, based on the site inspections that I've had over the last two or three years, facility's neat, it's well maintained, seems to be properly managed, applicants complied with the permit conditions, and again, no sheriff's complaints. So, where we left the, in the staff report, the options for the planning commission a little bit open. One approach, option one, would be essentially just to delete that one condition that requires coming back in five years. And I would note that all the other findings and evidence, all the other conditions remain in effect from the original approval, so all of that is still there. A second option would be to modify that condition. You could just extend it for another five years or some other period of time, or some other, you know, set of reasons. Or third would be just to deny the use permit extension. At this point, staff doesn't have evidence to support option three. So staff's recommending the planning commission approve either option one or two, either delight, delete that condition. And I would note that all use permits can be revoked at any time with or without this type of condition, it's in our code. If the, down the road, if the property changed ownership and it wasn't being well-run, when we started getting complaints, we could schedule a hearing to revoke their use permit. So we don't give up control entirely, we still have, we can enforce the remaining conditions of approval for hours of operation, for maintenance, and again, in a worst-case scenario, we could just revoke the permit. Option two, if the planning commission isn't totally comfortable with just eliminating the requirement, they, they could say come back in X years. It could be something a little bit different, it could say the planning commission review would be required if, if determined by the community development director that there's good reason for it based on evidence of non-compliance, complaints, criminal activity, that sort of thing. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
At this point, I would like to ask if anyone from the public would like to speak and/or the applicant?
I see no one from online.
Okay, so then I think we'll move on to clarifying questions. Or, did I miss something?
Yeah, no, I have a question.
Go ahead.
When do those yellow bollards go away?
When, Maz could pipe in, but when we actually start construction on the Highway One North improvements, that's when we'll be mobilized, we'll have the equipment there. And frankly, it's easier to sort of tweak the design then, rather than to stop things going through Caltrans today.
And when is that?
We're finalizing our, our remaining loose items with that project, I'm anticipating going out to bid in the end of the calendar year. So next year should be, hopeful, we're hoping to get to construction next year, and that would be one of the, I'm not sure exactly when within that timeframe it would be done, but it would be probably one of the earlier orders of work to do.
So, so those bollards will sit there for at least a year, probably more?
It's hard to say, but at least until we have the construction contract underway with a low bidder, whoever they may be, at least until spring of next year, I would say.
Can I just ask, were there other possibilities for, I mean, they don't look that great. I know it's not that much time, you know, in the history of Happy Moon Bay, but it is some time, so what else, what else was discussed? Can you tell me?
We, we looked at a couple of different options, as I mentioned, extending the curb and gutter along there, adding some landscaping. And the problem is because the city has work proposed on either side of the driveway in the next year or so, they would come in and probably damage that work or tear it out, and it didn't seem fair to the applicant to make him spend the money. Also, the city would probably have to replace it if we did damage it. And, and also, Maz can pipe in, but I think just from a design standpoint, getting all the pieces to fit together is a little bit easier if you do it all at the same time.
Now, just to add on to that, there is always concern with trying to work around small improvements like that, and because we're going to be modifying the rest of the curb and gutter, it's actually probably, it's not as, it's actually less expensive to just have the, have the contractor do it all at once than to try to work around existing infrastructure. And I think from the perspective of the bollards, is we, we definitely wanted something that was visible, that was, because this was a safety concern was, we didn't want anybody turning into that location. So aside from having a vertical curb, this was the second best option, that was something that really would stop a vehicle.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Hernandez, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I think my questions have been answered by Maz. I just, as you, but I will sort of ask a follow-up, I guess, which is, when you complete the improvements on this project down the road and you have approval from Caltrans to do so, I hope, or do you have a plan to make something that is more visually clear than what was there before? Because if I look at the stuff that's not yellow bollards, it's pretty easy for people to pull in. And that whole part of the Naomi Patridge Trail is, you know, from the McDonald's to the housing complex that's right there, it's kind of a death trap. So, do you have plans down the road to make those improvements more visually appropriate and clear so that it's safer for pedestrians and bikes who go along that path?
Chair Hernandez, yes, I would say we are looking at our alternatives there, we have some basic designs, but we'll actually be coming back to the planning commission to discuss that project and give an update in, in the next couple of months. So, we will have an opportunity to talk about that in a little bit more detail, but it's something that we're working on right now to incorporate into the plant set. And the idea would be to, yeah, the elimination of that ingress egress point is a safety improvement in itself, and what we're looking to do is integrate the rest of that frontage to be consistent with what we're doing on the rest of the project. But like, like I said, I'll, that'll be actually something we'll be coming back to the planning commission for an update in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Of course. Sorry, one more thing. So, could you just explain why we would need that condition in place, why that condition was put in in the first place? Because it doesn't seem necessary, but why would it be necessary?
I think you could argue it's not necessary, because like I said, we could revoke the permit. At the time, I think everybody was just, the idea of bringing in these shipping containers, and I think people just kind of had this vision of kind of haphazard scattering of, you know, these shipping containers, and then people hopping the fence at night, and we weren't sure how much noise would the roll-up doors make, and would it affect the neighbors? And there was just not a lot of opposition, I think one or two people had some comments at the hearing. And it was kind of a, just a fallback position to, to make sure we had everything right as far as potential effects on the neighbors. That's as good an explanation as, as I can come up with.
Thank you.
Commissioner Joanna?
Yes, I do have a question. I think you also mentioned that part of the reason why they had this condition in there was because of the LUP and housing element updates. Can you explain a little bit more about that and how it does not apply now?
Sure. Well, it's a, it's a pretty big piece of land, it's centrally located, it's close to downtown, and it's, in the 97 land use plan and the zoning code, it was designated as commercial general. We couldn't rule out that at some point, as we were working on these updated policy documents, that there might be some better use, maybe it would be a housing site or something. And, so it was just, we didn't want to say no, but we, we didn't want to preclude other uses there, or the discussion of other uses. And, as I mentioned, since these containers don't really involve construction, you can bring them in easily, take them out, it, it sort of seemed appropriate to give it a five-year timeframe. And with, when, when we look at the recently certified land use plan, the land use designation is the same, it's still commercial general. Jill can confirm this, but in the housing element, the draft element we've just completed, this was not identified as a potential housing site, we had enough other locations close to downtown that we could fulfill our, our future needs. And so that was the justification for doing it, at this point, it's the status quo, nothing has changed from a policy direction. And again, sort of the beauty of this type of storage container business is if in the future, somebody comes up with a bright idea, you, you bring in a crane and load them up on a truck and, you know, do whatever, so it's kind of a, a nice project in that sense.
I do have a follow-up question. So, since the housing element is not approved yet, is that correct? I'm wondering if it would make sense to keep it at a five-year still until we have confirmation that that housing element is approved? It's just a question, I just, because if this was the reason before, why wouldn't it apply now?
I would defer to Jill Akers on that question.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioner. Doug is correct, this site is not included as a housing opportunity site in the cycle six draft housing element, that is before HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development is reviewing it now. The housing opportunity sites plus pipeline projects for the housing element include a significant buffer above the required arena, and so from that perspective, I'm, I'm, at this point, having spoken with HCD very recently, I'm not concerned about needing this particular site. That said, your, your logic around this, we agreed with, which is why Doug presented these two options. So, I, I think the applicant staff, we, we support you in, in your thinking about this. It is, it did not escape our notice in the land use plan update that this could be a good housing site, certainly it's located within the town center, and it's, it's very suitable for that from that perspective. I hope that helps.
I have a follow-up question.
Please go ahead, Chair Hernandez.
We do have an existing housing element that's in effect, though, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, if I can provide a little color commentary, because I was here for this last planning commission meeting, I think a big part of the angst was that we were talking about having a town boulevard, it's an item that has survived and lived in the LUP update. And we also didn't have policies, we had some ambiguity as to whether or not this was an appropriate use based on some of the policies. My understanding now is, having read the staff report, that the policies we have in our new LUP, which has been subsequently adopted, allow for this use. And the other concern that we had was, well, we've never done this before, I think as Doug said, and we weren't concerned, we were concerned about how would this impact the community? And so I think those are all, those are some of the items that I recall from the last planning commission meeting on this topic that I could just.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to deliberate or entertain a motion?
I'm comfortable with excluding that condition personally, and I would make a motion to go with choice one A on this, on this list. So I would make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I would be willing to second that if there's no other comment or discussion on the project. So I make a second.
Okay.
We can still discuss.
Yes, we could still discuss it, now that that has been entered, the motion has been put to the floor. So can we be clear exactly on what the motion is?
The, essentially, if you look at the recommendation slide, this is the existing condition, permit term, and it goes on.
I can't see the slide, thank you, all right, thank you.
Essentially, it would just delete condition E 10, I believe it is, or E 2. That's the, the condition that says that after five years you have to come back, it would just be, we'd do it in strikeout to show that it's been deleted in the conditions of approval.
I do, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
If the property owner were to sell their property, or to sell the entire property, how do we know that the next property owner will be as good as this property owner?
Is everybody looking at me?
Yes.
Well, that is a concern. And as I mentioned, in our zoning code, in the chapter on use permits, there's a specific section in there that talks about how you revoke a use permit. And sometimes we get our different kinds of permits kind of jumbled together, and it's useful to think of, the coastal development permit is what it takes to build something. The use permit controls what you do in that building, or how it's operated, the hours of operation, controlling noise, security, things like that. And there are some conditions that would remain that address the hours of operation, maintenance requirements, keeping the site clean and neat. If, and we could, at any time, enforce those conditions, if they had garbage piling up there or something, we could, we could code-enforce it and make them fix that or face civil fines. If, working with the new owner just wasn't getting us anywhere, and we were getting calls from the Sheriff's Department, at that point, we would, we would have evidence, we'd have a basis to hold a hearing to revoke the use permit, and would come back to the planning commission and, and could do that if that's what things led to.
If I can follow up on that point. So if you had a situation where people were living in the shipping containers or you had inappropriate uses in the shipping containers, i.e. people were using it as office space or they were using it as workspace, those are examples of things where if you had evidence of that type of behavior, that would allow city staff to make a recommendation to revoke a used permit. And you, first part of the question and the second part of the question is, and you've had no complaints on this specific project since it was approved in 2018.
We, we could schedule revocation. I would also add, there is a condition of approval in the existing resolution that limits the use to storage. It, it specifically says you can't have people living there or using them as workspaces. So that would be, could just be enforcement of existing condition.
So would it be appropriate to add, to eliminate this condition and then put a condition in there to say, if this were to get sold, property to get sold, then it would go back to a certain evaluation period of, let's just say, two years or three years? I mean, it's, it's just something to, you know, this owner has been absolutely great. We don't know who can come in next. So deleting this for the term of this owner, but placing a condition in there for possible future owners so that there's a checks and balances for that owner.
I think we can do that, but I would ask the city attorney if there's any legal issue with getting rid of this condition and then saying that it comes back if you sell it. I don't think there is.
I, I think it would be more appropriate in line with this term to just bring this back for review if there's a change in ownership rather than do a revocation since we aren't following the procedures in the code. I would say it raises some potential enforcement issues just because the city is not automatically notified when properties are sold. So I think sort of the simpler and more standard would be one of the two options that staff presented.
I have a question. So Doug, you mentioned that zoning code allows you to review a permit and possibly revoke it. Does the code allow that revocation if there is an environmental hazard on the site?
I, I believe it would be. There are existing conditions in this resolution that say you can't, you know, store hazardous materials there. The, to, to revoke a used permit, typically it's, it's triggered by operational issues. And, you know, if somebody had a meth lab there and it exploded, yeah, we could certainly revoke their used permit pretty quickly. Or if they were storing, you know, hazardous materials or, you know, it became a hazard, yeah, there, there would be a basis to revoke that permit.
Thank you.
Or even if it didn't explode.
Breaking bad. I was thinking breaking bad, but.
It seems to me that the, the condition is more, that, that is, is a code enforcement issue less than, you know, less than needing to return in five years to review if it's still the same, from my point of view.
And I just do want to say thank you to Bob for giving me the quick tour at the end of the day. And the site is very clean and very well maintained. So I think the objective of the five-year review, I think you guys have accomplished that, based on what I saw. And I, I know it's always been a clean site because I've visited the site in the past. Do we, are we ready to vote?
I, I'm ready to vote. I mean, I don't have a super strong opinion. My inclination is the, to support the item as we put forward without the condition for reviewing in five years, but it's not a super strong position.
Yes.
Commissioner Goran?
Yes, please.
Acting Chair Gossit?
Yes.
Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion approved.
At this point, we'll move on to item 1B. And before Scott starts the presentation, I wanted to ask if anyone had any expertise they would like to disclose.
I'm not sure if this is expertise, but I did visit the site yesterday early in the morning, breakfast time. And I did knock on a few doors. Sorry to wake everybody up, but I did visit several of the neighbors and asked them questions and their perspective on what they, they see. They were, everything that they told, they told me has actually turned out to be in the, the report and the, the subsequent comments that we received from the staff. I hadn't had a chance to review all of that at the time, but, at, at the time of my visit. But then, since then, I've seen a lot of the comments that I received in the field reflected in their notes and comments that they sent to the city.
If I may, ask Bridgette for some technical assistance. There should be a way to do this so that his notes don't show up on there.
I also have expertise that I'd like to disclose. I also visited the site and talked with some of the residents, and I learned basically the same things that Hazel had. And, and again, what I learned from the residents are provided in the comments in our agenda packet, along with some videos. That's it for me.
Anyone else?
Okay. Are you ready, Scott?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Nice to see all of you virtually again this evening. And I appreciate the expertise communication mentions. I, I had that as a note in one of my slides. So thank you for that. And as mentioned, this is a, the project includes a new single-family house at 280 Champs-Élysées Boulevard. Next slide, please. And the subject property is on the southern cul-de-sac of Champs-Élysées Boulevard, actually one of the, one of our newest streets here in Happam Bay. And the site, the, the site is the vacant lot on the west side of the southern cul-de-sac. And the application was submitted back in 2017. Subject property is zone planned unit development and is subject to the Stoloski Gonzales Pacific Plan, which allows for single-family residential use. Now, a little background, the project includes the construction of a two-story house totaling 4,710 square feet, and that includes a two-car garage attached to the main house by a, sort of a two-story covered breezeway. Now, second-story breezeways and decks, most of those areas are considered floor area and included in the, the square footage calculation. The house contains four bedrooms and, and bathrooms on the lower level with the primary living space on the second story, which, and then the large covered deck that extends along the west side of the second story. A detailed landscape plan design was also included with the proposal. And the permits requested include a coastal development permit and architectural review. Now, background on this proposal, as I mentioned, the project was submitted back in 2017. The proposal was initially presented to the planning commission in August of 2018, once again in April of 2019, and then most recently in May of 2020. Now, the first two planning commission meetings, primarily there were concerns about sort of monolithic visual concerns with the garage next to the, to the new house. And then in May, sort of the response was, okay, let's, let's try putting a portion of the house in, in subterranean, in, in a basement. And then after the last planning commission meeting, a completely new design was formulated. And the new design was presented to our architectural advisory committee on two separate occasions. So that's kind of the history of the, the proposal. This slide shows the overall site plan and surrounding area. And with the new house, garage, and architectural low-lying wing walls that you can kind of see at various locations around the, the footprint of the new garage and house. Next slide, okay. And then this slide shows the, sort of a zoomed-in version of the site plan with the first floor plan superimposed into the footprint. Again, you can see the, sort of the wing walls and the, the driveway and garage.
Scott, can you point to the wing walls?
Let's see.
Since you had the slide up. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
I may have to point to them.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, Doug. Yeah, there's sort of.
Tell me when, Scott.
Yep. So there's one right there, and then several sort of that go along the, the front there and then come back towards the garage. Yep. And then, and then on the, sort of the southwestern side, there's one. Yep, correct, right there. So.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
And then, next slide, landscape plan. This slide shows the, the main portion of the new landscaping around the new house and garage. A local landscape architect was hired to help with the, the landscape design. And notice that the driveway width has been minimized that accesses Champs, the cul-de-sac on Champs-Élysées Boulevard, which is certainly an admirable trait, sort of reducing the prominence of vehicle access and encouraging pedestrian access. Drop tolerant landscaping has been included as well as a variety of tree species, replacing some of the trees that have fallen since this application was initially submitted. They've also included certain areas of, you know, where appropriate riparian plants to, you know, hopefully add some habitat value to the site, which is certainly a good thing. And then, let's see. Next slide shows the first floor plan that includes the four bedrooms and bathrooms as well as the breezeway and access to the two-car garage. Next slide shows the second floor plan, which is the primary living space, including kitchen, dining, entertaining room, as well as media room. And then, as I mentioned previously, off to the west there is the covered balcony, sort of deck space. There's also a small balcony off the, sort of the, the top right-hand corner that's sort of added a, a little bit of outdoor space to the front facade. And then, next slide includes the roof plan. And sort of the, the two rectangles there with the, sort of the Vs flowing in there are actually receded solar panel areas. And so initially, they only had one, but they've added an additional solar panel area. And those will be screened from view, so, which is kind of an interesting design element. The remaining portion of the roof includes standing C metal, which is certainly in, you know, in sort of a modern look. And then, next slide includes the east elevation. Now, as you can see, that there's a variety of materials, including the board form, concrete on the bottom, as well as vertical and horizontal siding. The house includes varying roof pitches that provide visual interest. Garage height has been limited compared to the main house. And you can see that the covered breezeway extends over, providing access to, between the main house and the garage. Now, the west elevation, a little bit different. You certainly see more glazing. There's a sort of a, an emphasis for, you know, the focus west. So this allows for, you know, views of the ocean and views to the west. And then on the, the right there, you see the garage, which is, again, sort of muted and less emphasis on the garage. And then as far as this south elevation, again, this is sort of similar to the west elevation. You see, it includes more glazing and more of an emphasis to the, to the south, sort of the, the, you know, towards Venice Beach or Venice Boulevard. And you really get a sense of the variety of building materials and architectural elements, you know, shed roofs, providing visual interest. Now, in contrast, the north elevation, a little bit more closed off, and that's by design. You know, the, the design team understood that, you know, there's some neighbors to the north where, you know, we want to respect the privacy. The, the overall width of the building has been reduced compared to what was initially submitted years ago, reducing that sort of, you know, the massing concerns that previously existed. That was the idea, to sort of address the massing concerns that were, you know, previously brought up at planning commission meetings. And then, let's see. The next slides include some of the architectural renderings that were included in the plan set. This one you see is from the Champs-Élysées Boulevard cul-de-sac, also showing the, sort of the front balcony that was added actually after the first AAC meeting. And then the second rendering includes a. And then the second rendering includes a, um, shows the entry, uh, sort of courtyard between the main building and the garage, um, with the canopy over the top and, um, shows that the, you know, the sort of the openness that, uh, you know, that they would the idea behind, um, you know, the the entry feature there, so. Okay, and this slide gives an overview of the analysis, uh, that's, um, described in the staff report, um, Staloski Gonzales specific plan, applicable sections of our, uh, local program, um, couple of things, you know, we did, we did receive, uh, quite a few comments, um, regarding, uh, drainage and grading, so also certainly, um, discussed that a little bit, uh, residential design guidelines and story polls, uh, and then last but not least, CEQA. So. Okay, regarding the Staloski Gonzales development standards, uh, we did include a copy of the development standards of the staff report and, uh, you know, uh, fairly brief, um, but the proposed house does meet all the development standards, including heights, setbacks and lot coverage. Uh, the idea is that, um, you know, the design team, they were not interested in requesting any sort of variance or exception, uh, which, uh, we certainly appreciate. And then, as far as visual resources, uh, all P plant unit developments are considered visual resources per zoning code. And then also the land use plan established the town Boulevard visual resource corridor, which includes Highway One and protects broad ocean views from Highway One. Uh, the interesting thing about this, uh, site is that, um, it's it's really not visible from Highway One, so the new home wouldn't, you know, have any, um, impact on, um, you know, broad ocean views from the highway. Now, uh, story poles depicting the new house, uh, were installed and, um, it's interesting because it's with the new, the the house to the east of the site, as well as the house that's under construction, uh, the story poles are really not visible at all, um, not only from, you know, a broad ocean view perspective, but, uh, just, um, from the highway in general, um, the new houses that were recently constructed are, you know, act as a screen, so to speak. Now, another, uh, important view from, you know, here in Half Moon Bay are views, uh, from the coastal trail, which is, you know, just to the west of this property, of, uh, you know, the ridge line of the coast, uh, the coast range. Uh, so that's certainly certainly something that was, uh, evaluated, um, you know, when this proposal was put together, as well as, uh, when writing the staff report. And, um, although not considered permanent screening, the Monterey cypress trees along the, uh, south side of this property, uh, screen, uh, the proposed house from the coastal trail. Uh, and, um, the story poles have been installed, uh, reflecting the revised building design and verifying that, uh, the public views from the ocean wouldn't be obstructed by the new home. And, um, the applicant actually submitted a verification letter from a licensed surveyor, uh, verifying that, uh, the story poles, uh, were accurately installed in, uh, location-wise and height. So that, that's certainly helpful as well. Now, as far as natural resources, uh, you know, it's customary, uh, it's required for our code that, um, anytime, uh, any development is proposed within proximity of, um, potential, even potential sensitive habitat, a biological resource evaluation is prepared and circulated for comments. Uh, that was conducted back, uh, when the application was submitted. And then since the last planning commission meeting, a wetland delineation was prepared and, uh, confirmed that the project site is outside of any wetlands. So, um, as noted in the, you know, staff report, as well as plans, uh, applicable buffers, uh, to the riparian feature along the, uh, Pullman Water Course, uh, have been met by and shown on the plans, uh, which require at least thirty feet from, uh, the center line of the Pullman Water Course. Now, grading and drainage, as I mentioned, uh, we've received lots of concerns about, you know, uh, you know, runoff and, uh, grading and drainage and, um, maybe I'll start with grading. Uh, the grading plans were substantially modified compared to what, uh, the planning commission previously reviewed. And this is primarily due to the removal of the the large basement that was previously proposed. And, uh, so that certainly simplifies things as far as grading, uh, only, uh, what's what's necessary for the, uh, you know, foundation forms, uh, are is what what grading would take place on the site. And, um, as far as drainage, uh, one thing to note, uh, the Pullman Water Course, uh, is directly north of the property, uh, but not on the subject property. Uh, and the the sort of the southern top of bank for the Pullman Water Course, uh, is higher than any other portion of the subject property. Uh, so the lowest point of the subject property is, uh, sort of on the the southwestern corner, uh, furthest away from the Pullman Water Course. Now, that said, a, you know, a substantial amount of effort has been put into, uh, designing, engineering, uh, the drainage, uh, associated with, uh, the new house. And the approach has been, um, several dry wells, uh, that will contain, uh, the additional storm water, uh, created from the, you know, the roof and other, uh, impervious surface associated with proposal, uh, that'll be retained on site. And, uh, any additional storm water runoff would be directed south into vegetated areas away from Pull the Pullman Water Course per gravity. So it's it's not something that necessarily needs to be engineered, it's already sort of designed in the site. Now, city engineering staff, they've reviewed the proposed grading and drainage, uh, civil plans that were prepared by a civil engineer and are supportive of the drainage improvements associated with proposed development. Engineering staff also confirm that the storm water from the site would be directed away from Pullman Water Course and towards, uh, stormwater detention areas with any possible overflow directed south into vegetated areas. And, um, you know, I, I think there's just a lot of, uh, concern with the, you know, the the water flow in the area and, uh, I, you know, our our applicant is aware and he the the applicant has agreed that, uh, an easement offer to allow for future, um, undetermined drainage improvements along the southern, uh, bank of the Pullman Water Course will be offered, uh, and is subject to acceptance by the city. So basically what that means is the applicant has agreed to o- offer the city an easement, um, for some sort of future, to help with some sort of future drainage improvements once or if that, you know, once that's, you know, the time is right, uh, subject to acceptance by the city. So that's, uh, certainly a helpful offer. And, um, I know the applicant is prepared to, uh, explain more on this subject and, you know, as you've seen in your in your path, we've received quite a few emails and, um, you know, concerns about drainage and, you know, um, how or if this proposal would affect drainage in the area. All right, uh, next slide. Now, single-family residential design guidelines certainly apply to this proposal since, uh, we are, uh, the planning commission's reviewing a new single-family house. And, uh, this slide shows the, uh, color and materials sample on the bottom and a, you know, snapshot on the top right of our single-family residential design guidelines. Now, is is this is kind of interesting, this, the initial submittal of this project took place before we had an architectural advisory committee. So the first several round, you know, reviews by the planning commission took place without any AAC review because we didn't have an AAC. With the complete redesign of the project since the planning commission previously reviewed this project, we thought it was appropriate to to bring to the AAC and, uh, you know, the applicant agreed that 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 totally made sense. So, um, first review by the architectural advisory committee took place in September of 2022. And the AAC, they were supportive of the design, but they they did have quite a few suggestions and, uh, to try and sort of, um, warm up the front facade a little bit. I I think that's it's safe to say that. And, um, a couple of the suggestions included removing louvers from the front windows, uh, you know, and, uh, sort of opening up the windows a little more, uh, the the addition of a balcony along the front of the building, uh, reduction of the board form concrete, uh, to a little more softer exterior materials, not limiting the board form, but just reducing the amount. And then reducing the amount of screen walls between the residents in the garage, so sort of opening up the, uh, the entryway to provide a more inviting, uh, you know, front facade of the new house. Uh, following that first AAC meeting, the design team made the changes and, um, two neighborhood courtesy meetings took place after the first AAC meeting, uh, by the applicant. It was, uh, just as a courtesy to sort of reach out and let folks know about the changes and what's what's being proposed. And then, um, the design was resubmitted, uh, we brought it back to AAC a second time. Uh, they were supportive of of the changes, but did provide two additional recommendations or suggestions. One was to maybe provide a sort of a patio area in the front of the residence, um, you know, to sort of, you know, again, just add to the sort of, you know, create a more inviting, uh, front facade. And then also, um, explore the idea of relocating the garage to the west of the of the residence. Now, this is a, this was an interesting recommendation because the initial, the original design that was submitted back in 2017 included the garage west of the of the residence, uh, which the AAC, they were, they were not a party to at the time. And, uh, back then, the, you know, there were concerns about the the massing, that there was, uh, you know, sort of an extended wall. And the applicant took that into consideration and, uh, you know, there were concerns with the, uh, the garage on the west and, um, decided that it was best if the garage was left where it is, uh, reducing the amount of, um, impervious surface and, um, you know, visual prominence to the neighborhood, uh, to the north. Uh, so, um, it was a soft recommendation, something that the AAC thought it would make sense just to look into and the applicant, um, you know, at the end of the day, decided it was better to move forward where the garage is is currently proposed. Now, one change that the AAC did, uh, suggest that, um, was overlooked by the, you know, practically myself and the design team, uh, the balcony on the on the front facade, uh, it was suggested to change the railing from a a solid railing to a glass railing. And, uh, you know, it's suggested that the planning commission, you know, if if you feel this is appropriate, to take the AAC suggestion and, uh, request that a condition of approval be added to, um, change the 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 railing for the front balcony from a solid railing to a glass railing. And city staff appreciates, we did, we were contacted by one of our AAC members earlier today, uh, in just noting this change. So, um, next slide. So story poles, uh, it sounds like, uh, you know, commissioners, you've had a chance to go out and see the site, story poles were installed, uh, let's see, before the Fourth of July weekend, uh, in compliance with our story pole policy. And the reason for this is not because that there was a variance or exception requested, but, uh, since this is a planned unit development and it's considered a visual resource area, um, our story pole policy requires the installation of story poles anytime development is proposed within a visual resource area. So that's the main, that's the reason why story poles are required, uh, for this proposal. And then, uh, let's see, next slide, uh, as far as the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act, uh, the proposal is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guideline fifteen three oh three, uh, which involves new construction of single-family residences. This, uh, this site actually had a, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration adopted, uh, with the residential parcel map back in 2012, uh, the evaluated potential impacts. And, uh, we do have a condition of approval, sort of, um, bringing up the conditions from the parcel map with this proposal. Okay, and then, next slide, uh, ju- just a few cleanups sort of to summarize, uh, meeting summary notes from the architectural advisory committee, uh, are on our website and were forwarded to the planning commission earlier today, um, kind of, you know, noting, uh, many of the recommendations of the the AAC. Uh, there was a typo in the date, uh, for, related to a coastal commission letter, uh, that was forwarded to the planning commission yesterday. It was a clerical error, uh, the the letter, uh, was, uh, requesting comments from, uh, the coastal commission, uh, during the, um, the preparation of the biological resource evaluation back in 2018. And, um, so that clarifies that. And then I, um, just wanted to mention, you know, with the glass balcony railing, uh, we do suggest adding a condition of approval, uh, with language, uh, solid railing along the east elevation balcony shall be modified to a glass railing. Uh, and then, you know, it's certainly appropriate to have that change show up on the, uh, the billing permits, plan submitted with the billing permit. And then, just to summarize on the noticing, uh, you know, with any time a coastal coastal development permit is, uh, proposed, uh, we post the site, uh, so this, the site was posted, uh, for the meeting this evening. We also mailed notices to all the neighbors, uh, and occupants within three hundred feet, uh, notifying them of the the meeting tonight. Uh, we also posted a legal notice in the newspaper. Uh, we also posted a legal notice in the newspaper. And then we also, uh, forgot to mention, we did post the site, a, um, with a laminated, uh, proposed site plan, as well as, uh, one of the renderings, uh, sort of a prominent rendering within the, uh, the plan set. Uh, so that is something that we're doing on a regular basis now, which I think is, uh, helpful for our residents. And then, uh, let's see, next slide, we are recommending a, approval of the pro-, the project. And note that there is a 10 working day appeal period, uh, that, you know, anyone could appeal the decision of the planning commission to the city council. And then since this, the subject property is within the appeals jurisdiction for the California Coastal Commission, there is a second appeal period in which anyone could appeal the final decision of, uh, the city to the, the California Coastal Commission. Now, as Doug kind of showed in his presentation also, the planning commission does have several other options. Um, one of them is approval as shown on this slide, or, uh, adoption, see next slide, adoption of the resolution with added or modified conditions of approval. Or, let's see, last, well, next slide, uh, continue the, the project to a date certain or date uncertain. And then, or, uh, direct staff to return the planning commission with a resolution for denial. And then, um, let's see. And then last slide here is just a reminder on sort of the meeting format and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to, uh, you know, answer questions or, um, take the next steps.
Thank you, Scott. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing for this item and invite the, uh, applicant to speak. And if we could keep it to, uh, 10 minutes for the applicant, is that fair? Is that what we usually do with our applicants? Okay, thank you. Are we having technical difficulties? Okay, I think, are we good to go or? Not yet? Okay, we have it now.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, um, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Staff and Neighbors. Uh, I really appreciate you taking the time, uh, to deliberate with us tonight. I'm Mark Masara and I represent the applicant now for the past several years. Um, and it is a, a real pleasure to be able to bring this project to you tonight. Um, you've probably seen our correspondence. Um, this is our fourth time in front of the planning commission. Um, and, uh, we believe that the fourth time is the charm. Uh, and that's in part due to three community meetings and two AAC meetings over the last year and since we were last before the planning commission. All told, we're now seven years in and 13 years since your approval of the Stoloski four home subdivision in 2010. I especially would like to, uh, thank Scott and, and the entire city staff, um, who have now spent countless hours with us and the neighbors regarding this project and it's better off for that effort. Um, the project currently reflects years of review, input, refinements and modifications. Uh, the project has been entirely redesigned three times now and is 2,000 square feet smaller. Um, the basement has been eliminated, the footprint has been consolidated and the project reconfigured to be located on the highest elevation part of the property. While the project, uh, in 2020 was about 150 feet long, today it's just 59 feet total. Um, where the project was, uh, you can move the slide forward and the next one, um, where the project, uh, was in 2020 was over 6,000 square feet. Today, the house and the garage together total just 4,700 square feet, incredibly because of the very large lot size, over 30,000 feet. The lot coverage is a tiny 8.2%. Compare that to the house that you recently approved at 2778 Pullman, which is now under construction, a 5,500 square foot lot with a 23% lot coverage percentage. Next slide, please. You can go to the next one, actually. Again, just since 2020, the project has been significantly reduced in size and consolidated in footprint, um, much more in fact, uh, than the recently approved home that I mentioned just a moment ago. Next slide, please. More recently and over the last year, working with the AAC and your staff, we've made additional refinements. Next slide, please. To make the house even more friendly and pleasing to our neighbors. A second story deck and a planter was added. We eliminated nearly all of the decorative board form concrete on the east facing or Champs-Elysees side of the home. Uh, new windows were put on the first floor bedrooms. Uh, see-through breezeway was added between the garage and the house, uh, to enhance views across the property westerly. Uh, and we used, uh, see-through wood louvers in the garage partition wall where formerly was board for, board form concrete to enhance views from Champs-Elysees across, uh, the southerly dunes property. Uh, the rooftop solar, uh, meanwhile, was doubled to over 6,000, uh, 600 square feet, which we expect to be sufficient, uh, to be able to operate the entire home. Uh, next, uh, uh, slide, please. Um, and these pictures, um, reflect some of those refinements. From the voluminous, uh, written comments that you've now received, it appears that all members of the community, uh, and the public agree with your staff and the AAC that, uh, that the home is gorgeous and will be an amenity to both the site and the community. This brings us, uh, I think, to the, the issue of the evening and that is concerns regarding the Pullman ditch. As reflected in our correspondence to you and our close work with your staff, um, over now many years, uh, the concerns regarding, uh, flooding related to the Pullman ditch from our lower lying, uh, elevation neighbors are, are real. That's why when we designed this house, we included numerous design components, uh, designed not only to address, uh, city policies and regulations, but also concerns regarding, uh, historic flooding on the Pullman ditch. And next, let's see. So, uh, among those, um, and I'm, I'm happy to discuss all of these things in greater detail, but just for the initial presentation here, uh, the home is relatively high elevation at 36 feet. Uh, and to give you an idea of what some of our neighbors are coping with, there are at least five new homes that have been, uh, approved and built since we began this process. Uh, those homes located adjacent to and, and, um, ownership of the Pullman ditch are generally between 29 and 31 foot elevation. So that, that six feet makes an enormous difference. But more importantly, the conditions of approval prohibit us from discharging, uh, rainwater or storm water into the Pullman ditch. The, the project is designed to capture runoff, to be able to store runoff and then to be, to be able to, um, discharge any overflow that might occur in a, in a flash flooding event, uh, southerly towards the right-of-way associated with the adjacent dunes property. And those, um, those designs are quite easily, uh, comprehended if you look at the elevations in the drainage and, um, survey documents. Uh, this is, uh, something that your staff has worked closely with us on and that we're quite proud of. In addition, it, and what's unprecedented about the project is this 30-foot easement to the city for future, um, flood control and prevention, uh, efforts. Uh, that, uh, property amounts to over 4,000 square feet and it would allow the city to expand, to deal with the various problems associated, uh, with the Pullman, uh, ditch. And we can move to the next slide. Um, there's, there are historic issues associated with Pullman, uh, related to the, you know, 161,000 square feet of greenhouses located east of Highway One that discharge impervious runoff into the ditch, um, with broken culverts, uh, most notably on the State Parks property west of 2,800. Um, and, uh, smaller culverts that are routinely blocked and backup and cause flooding, uh, related to residential properties, uh, that cover the Pullman ditch. Um, and all of those issues could be dealt with. We would like to be a partner and collaborate in those, um, efforts. Uh, we think they are, um, rather commonplace engineering challenges that can be overcome. But we don't own the ditch. We're not eroding into the ditch, we're not causing the plumbing and we can't go on to someone else's property and make improvements without trespassing. And so we've tried to design everything we can with your staff into this project to ensure that just as we have not caused flooding in the past, we're not going to cause flooding in the future. And that's in part the, the reason that the entire home is now consolidated and clustered on the highest part of the property adjacent to Champs-Elysees. But beyond that, it's very difficult, uh, for us to be able to solve historic Pullman ditch flooding problems on our own. Uh, next slide. Um, what, in our view, what isn't fair here is to penalize or hold our property hostage, uh, as has been requested in the anonymous key points document that's been posted at the site and circulated through the neighborhood until all flooding of Pullman ditch is resolved to the, uh, certainty of the surrounding community. As I said, we don't own the ditch and we don't have the authority or the jurisdiction to be able to make those improvements on our own. All we can do is work closely with you to, uh, alleviate and participate in, uh, solutions in the future, which, uh, we think we've done everything we can to do. In conclusion, I, I just, I want to point out that, um, this has been a long, arduous process. Despite, you know, all of the years and all of the hearings, the project has improved. It's significantly improved. It's improved to the point of where, uh, the opposition no longer opposes the house. Instead, we're talking about off-site flooding concerns. Uh, and that's okay. The flooding is real and for our low li-, lower lying neighbors, uh, we want to fix the flooding problem along Pullman ditch because when it overflows, it also impacts the westernly open space portion of our property. Nonetheless, uh, as I pointed out, numerous homes have been approved and constructed in the city since our process began. Um, and a denial of the home proposed at 2,800 is not a fix for the Pullman ditch. Fixing culverts and addressing upstream runoff are fixes. Raising lower lying homes is a potential fix. 2,800 has an elevation of 36 feet. We'll, we're gonna, 2,800 will capture its runoff. 2,800 will direct overflow south and off-site, far away from the Pullman ditch. 2,800 will contribute zero runoff to Pullman ditch. 2,800 will provide 90% open space and 2,800 will provide a 30-foot wide easement for future flood control. Together, these components more, do more than any new development ever proposed along the Pullman ditch and to address flood control concerns related to the Pullman ditch. To the Honorable Chair, I, I want to say years ago, I heard you mention in eloquent terms, your own efforts, work and challenges, uh, associated with your efforts regarding your own family home and the rewards that ultimately came from that process. After seven years, the time is here and the time is now for 2,800 to be approved. We sincerely hope you'll agree and urge your approval of this project. Um, we're available for questions and rebuttal if needed. I have additional slides, um, related to some of, um, what I expect to be, some of the concerns that are raised here that we can discuss, uh, if need be. I also want to introduce our landscape architect extraordinaire, Tom Conroy from the Kikuchi and Associates firm. Regarding the, um, the railing, I, we have absolutely no objection to a glass rail if that's the preference of the planning commission. I would just point out that in response, uh, to the earlier comments from the AAC, we designed that second story deck in order to create a, a more, you know, welcoming community, um, house front and incorporated a, um, a flower bed and vegetation along that, uh, deck area. And I am not sure how that would work with a glass railing, but we're certainly willing to work with your staff on that. Thank you.
Bridgette, who's next?
Yes, we do have some green cards and I believe, um, we will have possibly attendees online, nothing yet. Okay, so first we have is, um, John Rossi and then it's going to be followed by Beth McInerney. Sorry if I, um, mess up anyone's first or last name. So, John Rossi can go ahead, followed by Beth.
Thank you. So I live, um, directly across the Pullman ditch, um, at, um, 2804 Champs-Elysees. So I'll be one of the direct neighbors. Honestly, I don't even know where to begin, so I'll, I'll tell the story and I'll do it as quickly as I can. I think one of the things that was most alarming to me is I saw a letter the other day from a resident who called, "The behavior of people that live along the ditch and are worried about flooding, home erosion, um, danger to their family members as repulsive, um, for trying to block X, Y, and Z." I don't think any of us want to block the construction, we want the flooding to be resolved. So I'll back up. I moved here in May of 2021. I didn't commission the home that I moved into. I bought it under the premise that, um, the ditch, uh, infrequently overflowed and I have records of this from the disclosures, that's another story, um, that the city engineers had approved all of the designs to prevent flooding, um, that the home builders had done everything they could and that there was not a problem. Well, in that two-year period, my yard has been flooded a grand total of nine times. Uh, once in October of 2021, again in December of 2021, in December of 2022, and then January through March of this year. Um, I've had to buy FEMA insurance because I had water come into my downstairs. Um, I have permanent sandbagging, I've had to buy water pumps that at three in the morning, I've had to go out and operate to keep the water levels low. I've called the fire department. I've called the fire department three times to come out. One time, we used a sledgehammer to knock out portions of a fence to allow water to flow out to the north. I do not believe that you can adequately say that there will be zero impact on the ditch. I do not trust that the city engineers have adequately looked at this. I do not believe that we fully understand the water volumes that come down from rocket farms unabated at times. We have water flows this week. There has been no rain that they're dumping onto the residents' property. So what are we supposed to do? Do I need to live in a home where every time it rains, I have to secure sandbags, put water pumps out, have cameras in the yard, and be ready to wake up at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning to turn those water pumps on to continue to keep my house from being flooded? What I'm asking for is that the city and the builder truly look at this problem, fix it first, and then build the home. This is not fair to the residents. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I do not deserve to live in a place that gets flooded nine times in two years and be told that these are 10-year events. So 10-year event happens every other month. Is that our new norm? And am I supposed to believe that and buy that? Am I supposed to believe that city engineers have adequately looked at this and said that putting a few, you know, wells downstream are going to actually hold thousands of gallons of water that come through at any given point in time? And then also continue to have to sandbag a home and live literally in fear of a big rainstorm? What we are asking for is fix the ditch problem. The flooding that's been occurred has been well documented. I don't know how many photos we have to send, how many times I have to call 911 to ask that this problem be alleviated. Fix the ditch problem, and I would be more than happy to support the build of this home. Until that occurs, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Nine.
Okay. Just want to make sure of you. Okay. Okay, next, Beth McInerney can speak.
Thank you very much. I think I've seen everyone for the past three years on Zoom, so it's just kind of nice to see everyone in person and you on Zoom. I don't know what the protocol is. I'm a layperson. I do have seven years of photos of the story polls, the sightlines. Is there any way I could hand those over? And I'm willing to give up my time. I splurged on one of them. It is in color on my color printer at home. The rest are in black and white. So again, I really appreciate you listening to us, and I feel that in my bones that you're really listening to the neighborhood. There's nothing, I'm not anti-house, like, house, great, no problem. Where I have cognitive dissonance is when I am hearing lawyers and developers tell me, you know, the story polls are great. I have seven years of story polls being eyesores. It took 14 months to get them picked up one time when they were falling down. And again, I appreciate the responsiveness of the city, and I'm sure some of these pictures are actually in the Half Moon Bay City email record. But when, Scott, I appreciate you getting back to me and pointing me to the agendas. When you say that it's not visible from Highway One, the one of the last photos in my packet is literally from today, taken from Highway One, where you can see the sightlines, the story polls. I wish it were in color so you could see the orange, but another thing is I have two kids, you know, and I hear someone say, oh, life's, you know, it's not fair. Yeah, correct. Life isn't fair. For 20 years, we've lived in Miramar, and we've had about seven houses, I think, built in that time. And guess what none of them have done? None of them have impeded on our view, like, none of them. I can walk over to their house, and I feel comfortable talking about their dogs, literally borrow a cup of sugar. Like, that's the harmony of the neighborhood to me. This house does not scream harmony and togetherness and meshing. So I do have 20 seconds left, so I just want to say thank you again. This might be the only non-flood-related point of view. I live farther over on Washington. We even have sandbags and flooding ourselves nowhere near the ditch, but and we're pretty high up. But thank you again. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher Davidovich. David, sorry, sorry. And Anju, you're on deck.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to talk. I hope you build your house. I want you to build a house. And John, you stole my closing. This is really an indictment of the Planning Commission, so hear me out. In most towns, building a house or being issued a building permit and solving a city's drainage problem are mutually exclusive events, but not in Half Moon Bay. I ask myself, I know John had a lot of pain, but as representative of the family that has suffered the most in the last 20 years, the most pain and the most damage due to the city's inability to solve the Pullman ditch issue, why are you planning and even considering allow another building being built along this ditch without solving the problem? So here's some specifics. Why do I say this? Let's stroll down memory lane. We built our house and moved in 2810 Alameda Avenue, for the record, in 2003. Since that time, we've had over $25,000 worth of damage due to the ditch. We got six inches of water one night into our house due to the flooding of the ditch. On most big rainstorms, we get three inches of water in our garage due to the ditch. So I ask you, Planning Commission, why hasn't the situation been solved in 20 years? And why did you issue building permits for at least six different houses perilously close to the flood-prone ditch in the last number of years? There is a precedent, by the way, and probably a lot of you don't know about this. There's a Dr. Sarkis who has since passed away wanted to build on the lot immediately south of our property. And he went through story polls, and he went through architectural review, and he went through lots of time with the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission said, you solve that ditch problem. You come up with a drainage system, or you can't build a house. So I say, use that easement first and then build a house. I like what John had to say. So in closing, it's an ever-present problem. It hasn't gone away, and I ask you, Planning Commission, once again, use that easement before allowing the house to be built. Thank you very much.
Next, Anju. Followed by Brad Steinway.
Okay. So I moved here right around COVID. I love my neighborhood. I love our home. I love the people in this neighborhood. We're real people, friendly. We have so many parties. I'm not opposed to be a house building across the house from us, but to begin with, the picture representing the building is the back facade of the house. Totally misleading. It shows the back side facing the western side, not the side that's going to face us. So the fight that faces us is the wind screen wall. There's screen walls that they're calling over here. Balconies, which they said they'll put a glass now. But to make the matter much worse, they have privacy screens, and they have metal gates. What else? They're going to have security guards there. It's not a friendly building. The building that's being built behind us, the house that's being behind us, is so close to our wall. We did not make a comment. They have to build, right? But it's like my home. It's like our home. It does not disrupt us. They're welcome. People can come and say hello to our dogs, even if they bark so much. We're friendly. 30-feet easement that he's talking about? That's a requirement in Half Moon Bay City. My house is 30-feet easement right there. I did not donate that. It's required. The house behind us is also doing. The north elevation, I mean, I can go on. This was never socialized with me. Nobody came talking to me, or who is Mr. Vidovic? You know, he loves our neighborhood. He's building a home here. He loves our community. So why hasn't he made effort to come and see us? Or, you know, this might be his weekend house or his vacation house, but for John and me and Susan and Vic, Mary, who's here tonight, this is our home. We don't go anywhere for vacation. So we do care about our home. Fix the ditch first and build a friendly house, please, which is, which is in line with our community, or not a embassy, a consulate, or screens that we can't see in, right? You make a breezeway, and you step down three steps to go into your living room. You can see our house. You can see everything. That's all I have to say. It just, this is, just, thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, you're next.
Before I start, I'm going to reference some photos that I've got here that are in the document that was sent on Monday, emailed from Anju. It's listed on the
Commission has it on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what I've been looking for first.
Okay. Yeah, we have it posted. It's posted on the city website as well, and the commission's seen it. And I'll go ahead and pass this around, but I'm going to go ahead and show Commissioner Hernandez because he is not here, so I've been sending him all the documentation to make sure he sees the same thing that we're all seeing in person.
Thank you. I'll begin. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, I'm Brad Steinway, and I live at 2801 Champs-Elysées, directly across the cul-de-sac from the
Mr. Steinway, can you please speak right into the mic?
2801 Champs-Elysées, directly across the cul-de-sac from the proposed development. There was talk about these public meetings. We were notified of one and one only. It happened during one of those cyclonic bomb storms. It was torrential rain, torrential wind. It was impossible to step outside. Mr. Masara was 10 minutes late to his own party. We saw him arrive 10 minutes late through our window. We've not been approached by the applicant or his attorney at any point since the application was made, and we live directly across the cul-de-sac. Starting briefly on the plans, which are out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, the auto court, the concrete area outside in front of the garage, is within 10 feet, within the 10-feet border. Is there any reason it can't be dropped back? I'm not saying move the garage to the western side of the property. Just move the garage and the auto court back 10 feet, five feet, just so that it's not in the 10-feet border. The Champs-Elysées cul-de-sac is a fire lane. My question for Mr. Masara, that he can come back and answer later, is where will the contractor vehicles be staged? And where will the earth that is excavated for the foundations, where will that be placed? Mr. Masara went on, and I'm actually going to read directly from an email that he sent to Vic. And it's relating to the picture that I asked if you could bring up perhaps. The picture showing the flooding is a perfect example of what I referenced earlier. That flooded area is due to downstream obstructions, small culverts, and a failed culvert on State Park. However, the downstream obstructions are not limited to the culverts on the State Park. The 36-inch pipe under the property on Alameda, adjacent to the applicant's property, is the major reason that insufficient water can flow downstream. This water rises and breaks the bank on both sides, flooding John's property at 2804 and inundating the applicant's property. If that picture is the best example I can, I can show of that. The term 10-year flood is no longer relevant to the advent of these bomb cyclone storms which began hitting the coastline a couple of years ago. Please stop referencing those 10-year storms. The same email goes on to state, more importantly, the flooded part of 2800 shown in the last photo is a 30-foot elevation. The part of 2800 proposed for development at the very east end is 36 feet higher elevation. There is no flooding there. No, that water flows to the lowest points, the 30-foot elevation and the ditch. How does the applicant propose to deal with the water at the 30-foot elevation? This water presently sits on the property until, is it absorbed or evaporates? The property sits in a FEMA-designated high-risk zone where grading and filling are prohibited in a floodplain. This is by Building Code 140402OD Section J107.6. I repeat, how does the applicant propose to deal with the water at the 30-foot elevation?
Thank you, Brad.
Next, we have Vic Furlacher. Which is the same picture that you have in front of you with the car and the driveway.
Good evening. I'll just try your endurance for three more minutes, right on time with it. I'm Vic Furlacher. I live at 2805 Champs-Elysées Boulevard. For my wife, Susan Coglietti, myself, and the 24 Miramar household to agree with us, this is all about the effects of atmospheric rivers of rain and cyclone bombs of climate change on the Miramar floodplain. Retrospectively, it's easy to say there are at least three mistakes that have been made. Mistake one, the farms on the east side of the highway were not encouraged to capture rainwater runoff from their greenhouses and other impermeable surfaces during climate events. And I saw Joe's video being shown before. It might be interesting at some point. Mistake two, the city of Half Moon Bay has not dealt with the precarious state of the stormwater drainage of Miramar despite city-funded experts, expert reports. Mistake three, previous Half Moon Bay planning commissioners have approved the building of houses on properties that the Naples and Pullman ditches run through or are adjacent to, giving some of us the dubious honor of owning a ditch. This is covered land that would be absorbing rainfall and protecting the integrity of the ditches. Much has happened in the past six years since we've moved here. The drastic effects of climate change have really hit with cycles of drought and excessive rainstorms. Rain barrels are no longer forbidden, but now subsidized. Hydrologists now insist on water retention and not tubing storm drainage to natural waterways. And as Brad brings up, we're now on a FEMA-declared floodplain. It is critical that the city of Half Moon Bay does not repeat or reinforce prior mistakes. Prior mistakes do not justify putting an impermeable surface of at least 25,000 square feet, 2,500 square feet, on the intermittently water-saturated land of 2800 Champs-Elysées adjacent to the Pullman ditch and the 36-inch pipe under 2805 Alameda. This will be the straw on the camel's back, resulting in including this critical pipe in increasing Miramar flooding. We ask the commissioners to join us to urge the city of Half Moon Bay to deal with storm drainage prior to approving this construction. An intervention could be initiated prior to the next rainy season if the city would collaborate with those of us who own ditch property, which ironically includes now the property owners at 2800 since their property is eroding into the ditch right now. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We have one, we have no more in person, but we have one online. So we have John and Sandy Paoli. I'm not going to pronounce it. Paoli. Okay, let me just, I'm going to have Let me just, I'm going to have to. You should be able to unmute at this point. There you go.
Testing, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So just a couple of points as well. We are not here, any of us, to impugn a bad motive. We'd just like to stop further bad decisions. And a couple of things that haven't been pointed out. I think we have the longest history on this ditch. We've owned the property since 1962, as my father-in-law raised rabbits and garlic on the property. Subsequently, we did inherit the land that now has, our title report shows, a 50 by 100-foot lot. I can provide you with even the pictures that show there was a fire hydrant on the southern corner of the ditch, because when, it was a, it was a tiny little ditch. No homes existed whatsoever in the area at that time. We had moratoriums on water permits even back then, so there was no building. Nonetheless, that fire hydrant that we said, yes, this land used to go all the way across, that was removed from us as evidence. And the city, some, some entity did it so that we couldn't even, thank God, have a picture. Happy to give it to you. It shows on the fire hydrant that it was a 1962 fire hydrant. The other bad decision that, so, so by the way, that 38-inch pipe that's going under the Farrell's home, I, I don't like them to be dissed on that. It did handle the water when the city gave the permit for that and the building that they all seem to say now is just a terrible idea. Why did that ever happen? Because the ditch did not have the volume of water that it does at this time, and that did handle it. So he shouldn't be chastised. The other thing that is missing in this conversation is another bad decision. The diverter up on Highway One was put in by Mr. Stoloski, hired probably by Caltrans, but that water used to go straight under the highway, and it flooded his land and portions of, yes, the Pullman ditch, which made it. And as soon as that diverter was put in, everybody who's spoken to you tonight has now seen the increase of water, because none of it goes on Stoloski land anymore. And the 30 feet he's referring to is exactly what, where that water would be going had that diverter, bad decision, not been put in. So I think we're all, you should be able to appreciate why, as neighbors, we're gun-shy of any of the decisions that's being made, because every time a decision is made, it, we end up with the consequences of it, too. There was a time, Stoloski, in the not-too-recent past, when before, when he wanted to get permits to build on that land at all, had offered to put an entire culvert in. Nope, city said no to that. I can't tell you how many times my husband and I have tried to clean our own ditch as a maintenance issue. Nope, God help us if we step foot in our own property to do our own cleaning of the ditch. So no maintenance happens, and here we are again with, with more consequences. We all know that money could be spent to move that ditch, to move the water flow south to some wetland. I've talked to Jill about this on one of our visits as well. It could. Does it cost a lot of money? Yes. All of us could have our land back and backfilled in. So I, I think, I don't have any action rhyme with any of you. I certainly don't have it to, that property owner, he builds, he's going to do nothing but join the club of flood victims going forward. And we know, you, you have the pictures presented to you again. So we don't want to see compounded bad decisions on top of others. Let me just look to see if I have anything else to put in here. Probably not, we're looking for nothing but real solutions. And nobody's trying to hold him hostage. I understand the position that you're all in as well. We all wanted to have our homes there. We understand his desire to have one there. But for God's sakes, seriously, how many decades? We've been, our household's been doing this for 44 decades ourself. And it just is frustrating, and you guys all have way too many big guns that wear the rest of us down. And I, this is the nicest consensus that I've ever seen, to move forward and do something with that ditch. I don't know what outcome you're going to make of a decision tonight, but I hope you've heard us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks. Okay, that is all the public comment I have.
Okay. So that, at this point, I would ask our commissioners if you have any clarifying questions. Chair Hernandez?
I would, first of all, like to welcome former Commissioner Conroy back to the planning commission. I would like to hear Maz's city engineer's perspective on the assessment that this project will quote, "create zero runoff to Pullman ditch." Probably not an accurate statement, but would love to get the city engineer's assessment of what the net impact to drainage is on this project, in addition to the staff report. And I would also love to hear Mr. Conroy's perspective on how the landscape plan will help ameliorate, if it does in fact ameliorate, drainage issues that exist today, that we've seen evidence for today.
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. I have been asked that we take a five-minute break. So if you don't mind, maybe Maz, you could ask, answer that question after the break. Thank you.
Right, we'll be back.
Live, I don't know if we're live yet. We are? Okay.
Okay. We are back. 9:30, we're back.
Thank you. Okay, so I think Maz will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. For the record, Maz Bosreginia, Public Works Director and City Engineer for Hafman Bay. I think the question that was posed was with regards to runoff from this existing of the, from the property to the Pullman Ditch. I've been looking at the existing topo survey of what's out there existing right now versus what's being proposed. And I will, I mean, what I will confirm is that what I'm seeing is that they are, the property, the applicant is proposing to continue to keep the water away from the top of bank and taking it onto the property. They have an area drain that ties into that system. And so for the, for the design storm of 10 years and two hours, it does meet the standards. And so they, they are proposing to do something that is reducing that, you know, and basically addressing their own stormwater runoff needs. Is it, is it solving the bigger issue? No, absolutely it's not. But it's not, from what I'm seeing, it's, it's hard to see it contributing to the problem.
Thank you. Chair, oh, and I think we were gonna hear from the landscape architect?
Yeah, I'd like to get his perspective. He's dealt with many projects in our community, also around drainage. And I'm curious what his assessment of this will be.
Well, thank you, Rick, and Commissioners and staff. I can, I can tell you in no uncertain terms that none of the landscaping that's proposed on this plan will have any effect on the ditch. Because the ditch, in its entirety, from the southern bank to the northern bank, is not on our client's property. The entirety of the landscape plan is dedicated to improving the mediocre, at best, biodiversity and vegetation on the site. That's why we have three pages of our landscape plan is dedicated specifically to vegetation management, noting the preponderance of invasive species, including several highly invasive species like gibode grass and poison hemlock that are, that cover the site. The landscape plan is intended to, in some parts adjacent to the property, beautify the property for the client's enjoyment and the front yard for curb appeal. But the vast majority of the landscaping is dedicated to managing the terrible invasive species, preventing this from being a continuing vector to the adjacent open spaces for those invasive species. There, and in doing so, it may have an effect on the stormwater within our property. But it won't have any effect on the flow through the ditch because it's not on our property. I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Hernandez.
Is, I heard, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, I think you have addressed my question, but the elevation of the property is designed in such a way that it's not going to be pushing water in the ditch, it's actually pulling water away from the ditch and pushing it to the open space to the south. Is that the correct way to think about this? I'm interpreting those statements that have been made before.
I think I can respond to that. The, from, based on the grading plans and the proposed grading plans that I'm looking at, that is accurate, that the applicant is proposing to grade it away from the top of slope towards the property. And the low point is actually further west and south from the property itself. So that's the path the water would be going under normal conditions. Obviously, there's, there's different types of conditions and there's, you know, especially with the recent rain events that we received earlier this year. I know that's not satisfactory to a lot of the neighbors. But based on the proposed grading plans that I'm looking at, that's, that's what I'm seeing.
And can I ask, just, so where does the water go?
Any onsite stormwater that would be coming down, it would go towards the drywells that they have established. There's a lot of pipe networks and then ultimately there's an overflow release that is on the west side of the property that would continue flowing downstream on the 2800 property itself.
To, okay.
So it'll flow onto their property, the overflow? Okay.
From their own, yes, from their own, from their own system, yes.
Right, at first.
Maz, can you tell us how that system will work in like a 50-year storm or 100-year storm, like in terms of what we are seeing today?
And I think that, and I've spoken to some of the residents as well, and I think that's the bigger challenge is obviously with the, with changing climate and intensity of rainfall, it, our standards, you know, they, they're, who knows how it's going to look in the future. But based on what we're seeing, it, it probably will not be able, it won't handle something of that large of a system. What we're still gonna have, they're still gonna have localized flooding, you know, the area that is depressed where the area drain is in the situation where they have a lot of rain, we have a lot of rainfall, that area will pond. But again, the, the low, the low point is to the west and not to the north. So I wouldn't, I still wouldn't see this as being something that would infiltrate into the ditch itself, but actually flow west towards the bluff.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we still doing clarifying questions?
I think so. Let's do the clarifying questions and then we can deliberate.
Quick one for Scott. So Scott, in, in the last planning commission meeting, Commissioner Polgar actually asked you for the square footage, not just of the house, but of all the impervious surfaces, the driveway and so on. And you said, "That's a really good question and we need to look at that." Do we have that? I don't, I don't see that anywhere. Do, do we have that yet?
Yeah, so we have the lot coverage for the house and garage. And then the only added impervious surface beyond that is the driveway, which is in the parking area just east of the driveway. So that's, that's an additional roughly 1,100 square feet, 1,100 or 1,200 square feet at the most.
Thank you.
I have several clarifying questions on several aspects of the staff report. So if I could take each of these in step to mirror what I read in the staff report, that would help me be organized and be very clear in what I'm asking. So the first thing I did notice, and I don't know if this is a big issue or not an issue at all, is just to explain in the first page of the project background, I believe it's a minor detail, but I just want to resolve it in my head. The LCP land use plan designation had, has changed from what was previously put on there. I think previously it was cited as a plan unit development in all the previous staff reports. But this particular staff report just itemizes as a residential low density. I'm just asking, why was that change made? And if, and, and I'm not thinking that it's an issue, but I just wanted to understand why that was made.
Sure. And Scott, I'll go ahead and pick this one up.
Okay.
The, the recent local coastal land use plan updated the land use designation for the Staloski Gonzales Plan Development and moved it into the low-density land use designation because the subdivision had already been accomplished. Some of the development had already been accomplished. The specific plan, according, accordingly, had already been somewhat implemented through the subdivision, which included buildable areas for the sites. Two of the properties had been through coastal development permit review. This one was in review and there's actually a settlement agreement that affects some of the build-out on this site. And as you see in your, your documents, the staff is proposing to maintain some of the settlement agreement requirements in conditions of approval, even though the settlement agreement is actually sunsetting in about a year and a half. So all of the things that were special about that subdivision and, and also including the fact that the, both of those cul-de-sacs had been built at Pullman and at Champs-Elysees. The need for maintaining it in the land use plan as a plan development was no more. And it was retired, basically, like many other plan developments in the land use plan, because they'd already been substantially built out or the, the focus of the development policies had already been fulfilled or covered by other planning documents. So I hope that helps.
A little. So I have a follow-up question to that with regard to your explanation. So it's no longer, I understand the reason that plan development is not used now, but it's still under a specific plan or design standards or, what is that?
So the zoning hasn't been updated yet. The zoning is trailing the land use plan update. And so we're continuing to implement the, the specific plan that, which is attached to your staff report and all the standards that were in it. And at some point, the zoning will come forward. In fact, we don't even have a zoning district for that low-density of development. It's, it's basically a half acre per parcel approximately. And so we, we have some work to do to, to get the zoning to align.
Okay, so the zoning still needs to be aligned with?
Yeah, but the, but the specific plan, in my opinion, is actually consistent with the land use designation that was just applied to the property.
Okay. So that is one. The second comment I have is the buffer, the 30-foot buffer from the center line of the Pullman Ditch applies to this property. It's because of the requirements per the zoning code, right? Chapter 18.38, that's standard in these types of situations, correct?
Good evening. I just wanted to make a distinction between a buffer and an easement because they're technically two different things in legal terms.
Right, I understand. And I'm talking specifically about the buffer, not the easement. Because I have questions about the buffer, about the easement later on. So this is just for the buffers, is that correct?
Yeah, so the buffers apply as a result of the zoning, that's, that's.
Oh, zoning, okay. I have questions now about the initial study, which was mentioned next in this report. I understand the city circulated one of the biological resource evaluation, full comment to the Coastal Commission. But the current one that was in the, in the packet, which was dated February 14, 2019, when it was an updated version of the original one. Scott, was that BRE circulated to the other agencies in the Coastal Commission?
Yes, it was. So the, the, when this application was submitted, the biological resource evaluation was updated and then the update was sent out to all the, the normal resource agencies, including the Coastal Commission. And we didn't receive any comments from Coastal Commission at that time, but we did receive a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers.
So are you saying that the February 14, 2019 BRE was circulated to the Coastal Commission and the other agencies because the dates don't seem to match up? There's been two updates to the BRE?
Yeah, so, so it was, absolutely. And it was also posted on our website. And we didn't receive any comments besides from the Army Corps of Engineers. And so the biological resource evaluation was originally prepared with the parcel map. And then it was more of a, okay, let's see if anything has changed since the parcel map was reviewed by the planning commission. And, you know, we hired the, the same biological consultant that prepared the original report to update it. And they basically confirmed that not really, not much had changed and that they didn't, they recommended the same, had the same recommendations as what was originally included in the, in the original bio, bio report, so.
Thank you, Scott. My question is specific to whether or not the Coastal Commission commented on the parcel map, on the, the BRE that is, was included as part of this packet that I'm looking at today.
No, no, they didn't. The update, they did not.
So, and can you explain why? Well, they, it was circulated to them, but they did not provide any comment. I just wanted to make.
That's correct. They did not provide comments and it's, you know, I've, I've been circulating biological resource evaluations to resource agencies for 10 years now. And Coastal Commission, most of the time they provide comments, not all the time. And, you know, I, I follow up, but hey, if you don't provide comments, there's not a whole lot you can do.
Yes, I understand. So the only comments that we received back was for the first BRE, first updated BRE and the Corps of Engineers commented on that.
Yeah, that's right.
Although I did see some email correspondence between, I think it's you and somebody at the Coastal Commission about willows that were discussed.
Correct. And so the, and just to clarify, I, the correspondence that was provided to the commission was related to the wetland delineation that was prepared since the last planning commission meeting, planning commission review of this, this project. And a wetland delineation is, is typically a separate effort and separate document compared to biological resource evaluations.
Okay, thank you. I, I do, I do understand, thank you. So another question I have is following these recent torrential rains, there was, there is evidence of numerous plants and animal species that have re-emerged after the drought years since 2019. Why is the staff not conducting an updated biological resource evaluation? Because things have changed so much, I'm just wondering if staff has, if staff actually did an assessment and determined somehow a new biological review is not necessary? I'd just like to understand that perspective.
Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to provide clarification on that. So our, our, our normal practice in collaboration with staff at the California Coastal Commission is that typically a biological resource evaluation has a, you know, normal shelf life of about five years. And if we, if we get, you know, if we exceed five years, then it's normal practice to update the biological resource evaluation. And we're still within the five-year window. We've also had biologists out on the site numerous times in preparation of the wetland delineation. And it's, you know, they're, that's what they do, they're, they identify any sensitive habitat or species, you know, that's what they do on a daily basis. And they would have notified us of any major change that they noticed during the wetland delineation fieldwork, so.
Thank you. Jill answered the specific plan question. Going to talk about drainage, if that's okay? I have a series of questions and I just feel like I need to ask, is that okay?
Please go ahead, yes.
Okay, thank you. With regard to drainage, drywells. In California, drywells are used infrequently and with caution due to the concern that they provide a conduit for contaminants to enter the groundwater. Has the city coordinated with the Department of Water Resources and Regional Water Quality Control Board regarding the use of drywells at this site? And, and has there been any drywells being used on other properties in, in Hafman Bay?
I, I know, I don't think we've, you know, drywells are still a, a form of stormwater dissipation that is promoted by the Water Board. And that's something that is, from a residential standpoint for this type of use, it's very common. There are other areas where we have drywells installed as part of the development to address that design storm year. I can't think of one off the top of my head right now, but there have been some smaller residential projects that have done that.
Okay. So they don't need to be, the, for the size of property, it does not need to be registered? Because this is fairly large.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know if they have criteria as to the, the size and the amount of water getting in, you know, infiltrated. I don't know if they have certain capacity issues that?
If I may add, technically, once you start getting to the 10,000 square foot and larger range, then you start looking at having a operations and maintenance agreement recorded against the property on file with the city with inspections and oversight. But this project for this size does not require that.
Okay. So city is supportive of the drywells? And, and the term supportive is used in the report and, and that raises some questions in my head, what does that mean? So the question I have is, has the city conducted its independent drainage calculations and analysis of the applicant's submittal to verify and confirm and validate the findings? I just wanted to understand if the city has conducted that assessment.
We have, when we get the calculations, our engineers will review those numbers and basically redo those same calculations step by step to confirm that it's been accurate and there's no errors. And again, to the design storm of 10 years and two-hour duration, it did meet the requirements for that, for that storm. That's, I mean, fortunate or unfortunate, that is the standard that we are using still.
Speaking of the standard, because it's a standard, does it necessarily mean that the city is obligated to only go by that particular standard? Or based on evidence from the last three years, can the city now say, "Look, there's evidence, there's climate change, there's, there's state water resources, the state climate scientists have already said that this is a problem." Would it be prudent for the city to continue, knowing that you have climate scientists on the state and federal side that have actually commented on this, to say that it's okay to design to a 10-year, two-hour duration? I, I just am asking if this is prudent? Just because it's a standard doesn't necessarily mean it's a prudent standard.
No, that's, I mean, that's a great comment. And I think, you know, there's, there certainly are applications where, you know, whether the applicant or the jurisdiction requests additional storage. And as with, with regards to the standard itself, that is a topic of conversation because, you know, whether we, it, it may not even be that we change the 10-year, two-hour event, but what the 10-year, two-hour? but what the 10-year, two-hour event looks like with what concentration you see and the volumes of stormwater, that itself is going to be changing. And as we continue moving with our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permitting, those will be updated, and that's actually, a lot of conversations right now are happening at the state level and the higher levels with regards to those regulatory numbers. It hasn't been updated yet, but I expect that to happen.
Right. I understand that. But regarding this development, is it prudent to be, I mean, this is a question that I'm just trying to get clarification. I don't know if you can give that to me. Is it prudent for somebody like me in the Planning Commission to say, hey, yeah, this is cool, great, because the city has a standard? It's actually substandard in my head, possibly, based on the research I've done. So, I'm just trying to grasp that for me, to be able to walk through this recommendation, right? So, that's a question I have. And does the city have guidelines or standards for drywells, designed drywells?
So, yes, the, for the second part, the drywells are generally sized for that design storm, and then the locations of it are reviewed against the geotechnical report to ensure that, you know, one of the things we want to make sure is we don't, we're not approving a drywall that goes and taps into a groundwater, a high groundwater table. That's, you know, that defeats the purpose. So, those are the types of things that we look at to ensure that the drywall location, sizing is appropriate. And again, if we're, you know, if we're looking at beyond the storm, the design storm, that is something that, you know, the applicant can choose to do that. It's, it becomes a little more challenging as far as what our requirements are.
Speaking of high groundwater table, or even perched groundwater tables, has, has the city done any analysis on the subsurface soils that verify where the drywells are an appropriate drainage measure for this site?
We have, we have not, and I think with regards to larger storm events and, you know, major flooding and inundation, they're not gonna, it's not going to resolve any, you know, flooding. It's not going to be able to take the ditch water, right? It's not sized for that.
Right. So, forget about the ditch, about this site and the soils on this site and the drainage that's being proposed at this site. I'm wondering if there needs to be a subsurface soil investigation so that they can actually figure out where that groundwater table is? Because my next question was going to be, has the city conducted any assessment on the depth of groundwater table? Or, or if there is a perched water table? And, and what we're saying is, we don't know that yet.
Well, it's, I, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but we do have a geotechnical report on this project that does talk about where they encountered groundwater.
So, did they do soil borings?
They, I believe that they did. I think it's been a while. I don't remember when the date of that was, but we do have a geotechnical report on this project. I don't know, Scott, you have that information available you might be able to share?
Yes, so with the, the previous proposal, the basement, there was, there was a geotechnical report conducted, and normally that's provided with the building permit submittal. So, though, my guess, it'll need to be updated before, you know, building permit submittal to, and, you know, structural engineer is going to use this geotechnical report for other findings as well, so.
And generally, when we find, you know, I, I, we've been asking for this information in advance of building permit submittals because of this potential concern. And realistically, what we, what we would do in that scenario of a higher groundwater table would be to lessen the depth of that drywall and widen the surface, you know, the, the, the area of its, of it itself, so that it provides that storage volume that's necessary for the design storm.
Yes. So, as far as that geotechnical report that was conducted at this site, what year was that? And does that, was, was that recent? Was that after the major three-years of storm events? I mean, because I would, logic tells me there could be high groundwater table now compared to if this was done 15 years ago or 10 years ago, or? I, and again, it's just my, I'm trying to solve my logic, and I'm just not grasping.
I think what Scott was saying was, so, yeah, it would have been done prior to these recent, recent rain events, and what I would say is, we also have a, you know, with, with this major rain event, we have a, it's kind of created a seasonal groundwater table. And what we are noticing is, a lot of areas are saturated for months afterwards. And so, you know, from that regard, I would say, yeah, it's, it's definitely something that is, is of a concern. However, our design, based on what we have available, that's what we're looking at as far as the design. Now, we can certainly take a closer look at the building permit phase and modify the drainage volumes, especially with regards to the groundwater table. But, you know, there's, there is a certain depth that you would hit it. It's not seeping up through the ground, so it's not that it's a, you know, it's not providing that hydraulic pressure to actually come out, out of the ground in those locations. But, so there is some depth there, it's just a matter of, you know, the timing of it.
My next question is, it's a, it's, I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm, I'm going to ask it anyway. In the staff report, it says that the engineering staff has confirmed that stormwater from the site would be directed towards the stormwater, stormwater detention areas, right? To the south, to the vegetated areas. And, and I'm assuming that's the open land that's back there, it's not really vegetated, or, when I think of vegetated, I'm thinking about farmlands, but it's, it's really vegetation on the land, that's whether it's natural or farming, is what you're talking about? Or, or what the report talks about, right? Does the city have a plan on how to release that retained water, once it's there, on that land? Or is the stormwater collection area considered a retention pond, which is different than a detention pond, to permanently hold water to create wetlands? Or is this area already a wetland? And I asked this question specifically because of what happened on Beechwood.
Okay. What I will say is, I don't know if I can speak to the wetland question specifically, but what I will say with regards to the drainage system that was designed, they do, you know, again, we want to make sure that we don't have retention systems, you know, detention, detention is one thing, and they have one around the area drain, kind of on the north side of the property. And so, that's where, that's where some of that stormwater would collect, especially coming off the top of the bank. And they have pipe networks that take it to drywells, and there's rock dissipators as part of the system it's designed, and there is an overflow release. So, if it gets inundated with stormwater, there is an outlet that does not go to the ditch.
Okay, so I'm not talking about the ditch, and I'm not talking about the site now. I'm talking about where the overflow is going to go to, which is the south area, the vegetated south area.
Right.
That's going to be where the water is being detained, according to the staff report. If the water is being detained in that area, does the city have any plans to release that water if it's detained for a long time? Or is the city planning to create wetlands in that area?
We are not planning to detain that water in that area. I, um...
I'm very concerned about this.
Yeah, no, there's, there is infiltration, and there is positive drainage flow out towards the bluff, but yes, that, that is a concern. I can understand where that's coming from.
Yep. And because I'm asking, I'm asking that question because also wondering if there were soil investigation done on that south side of, of that south property where the water will be detaining to, from the site to that property? That's where I'm asking whether the soils have been considered for the city to make the, the determination that that is the best area to detain water. And I'm not sure if you can answer that, but maybe you guys can figure, an answer for that at later time.
Yeah, I could probably provide a little bit of clarification on that. Now, there was some soil analysis related to, you know, the possibility of wetlands that took place with the wetland delineation, and the conclusion was that there weren't, there aren't any wetlands on the site. And normally, overflow from detention systems are designed to infiltrate into the soil as opposed to, you know, standing water type situation, and typically doesn't happen on a very regular basis. And I think the idea, at least, you know, the, the civil engineer that designed the drainage plan was that any overflow would infiltrate and not necessarily, you know, stick around above, you know, and create standing water.
So, if you could clarify what you just said, are you talking about on the site or south to the site where the water is detained? Where was that?
On the site.
Okay. I'm, I'm specifically asking about the area where the water will be detained, the overflows will be detained on the south property where you're saying it will be, if, if the drywells are at capacity, there's going to be overflow to go to the south property, which is not on that site that we're specifically speaking about. So, I'm not really sure if there was any percolation analysis that was done for that site, there being, it's not going to infiltrate at that south, southern property, and that might create wetlands. Unless we already know that that area is already a wetland. I'm not speaking about the delineate, wetlands delineation for this particular site. I'm speaking about the report, which, the staff report that actually states that the city will require the applicant to pass the overflows from the drywells onto the south property. And if that's a requirement, that's a concern to me. I do have a question about the meaning of, so I'll, you know, this is, these, I don't know if you have a response for me on that, or if there's, it's something that you can think about and perhaps give me an information later on. But my next question is, I'm trying to not take up all the time, but I do have a lot of questions. The next question is, the report has two things in it. It has an access easement and an easement. Is there a difference between the two terminologies?
No, I, I think there were, it was assumed that they were one and the same. So, yeah, the easement offer, well, it's, it's just one as far as I, as far as I know, so.
Right. So, there is no difference, technical difference or legal difference between access easement versus just an easement?
I think the way it's phrased and the purpose of the easement is to give the city a future opportunity to do some work in that ditch area, and so the city needs permanent permission for those types of improvements. And I believe the condition of approval says it will be reviewed by the city and the city attorney to make sure it serves that purpose.
Okay. Which brings me to a question that just came to mind. I've heard several people speak about, you know, in the past, the city has, the city advised residents that the city doesn't have any rights to do anything in the ditch. So, why would the city ask for an easement to work in the ditch?
I can share a little bit there. Ultimately, with these easements, if we put together something that covers this entire area, there is the opportunity for the city to do improvements. Now, because it's private property, what we'd probably look at is establishing some sort of an assessment district to address these needs, and that's part of this process of reserving these potential easement locations so that, once we have that enough real estate and we have, and there is the, you know, Prop 218 process to get that assessment district established, then we can actually look at doing some sort of program to maintain this ongoing.
So, this would be a drainage assessment district that would be need, would have to go to a vote by the, the, the people in the area or the entire city?
No, it would, it would go to a vote to the people that are impacted by the area specifically.
Okay. So, my next question is regarding this easement. I looked up some previous county-recorded maps, and on one of them, it was of July 18, 1983, it shows an easement along the northern portion of the parcel between Boulevard and Naples Avenue. Why do we need another easement if there one, there is one already existing?
I don't know if that easement area covers the, the, the property that we're looking at.
It's the same property.
For the, for the full 30-foot?
It's the same property. In fact, I think it's also included in the settlement agreement.
Yeah, I think that's what that is. So, yeah, that's actually Doug mentioned.
The sewer district?
That's the sewer district, and that's with the Granada Community Services District.
Is, is that correct? Is it, Scott, is that what you're, we're about to say?
Yes, that's correct. So, that's, it's a, it's an easement for the sewer line, so. It allows Granada to access in case, you know, there's, there's any concern with the sewer line. So, it doesn't, wouldn't necessarily cover any future, you know, potential drainage improvements or, you know, this, I, I believe it wouldn't allow the city to go in there and, you know...
Right. The way that that is, yeah. For the sewer easements, because it's outside of our collection system boundary, it is a Granada Community Services District easement. If it was a public utility easement that was more generic, that would be something else, but we don't technically have the rights to access.
But you, can you tack on to that easement and access the ditch from that end?
I have to take a closer look at that, but that would be subject to approval by the Granada Community Services District.
Okay. So, where is this new 30-foot easement? I, I didn't, I wasn't able to find it on the map.
So, the easement offer would, would extend the, basically the entire 30 feet from the northern property line of the subject property. It would extend 30 feet south, so.
Just the property?
Just the property there, no, okay.
And other properties have had that requirement for the potential stormwater easement as well in the neighborhood. So, if we can cobble together the, you know, this, this overall subset of easements, then with an assessment district to financially back it, we could actually do a, do a district that could alleviate a lot of the issues, understanding that there's still more to be done upstream.
Okay. I'm trying to process what you just said. It'll take a bit. I'll go down to my next question. So, this, in the staff report, and this might be just a typographical error, but I needed to clarify that I'm not looking at something incorrectly. The staff report represents, references a draft condition of approval, it was titled 1B, that specifies the requirements for a 30-foot easement. I cannot find that condition in the, and this is for Scott, in, in condition 1B, in the conditions of approval. I'm just wondering if you can provide clarification on that.
Yes, absolutely. Let me just pull up the resolution here.
Yes?
Just a point of order while Scott's working on that. It's apparent to me that we are going to go past our 10:30 deadline, so I was just going to ask that formally extend the meeting to...
I, I've been, I've been paying attention to the time. I thought we might do that closer to 10:30. I mean, unless we could vote on that now and decide how long we would like to go after 10:30.
I'd suggest 11:30 would be my, based on where we're at now.
Okay. Oh, okay. So, I'm sorry, just one moment, please. So, I guess we could take a vote?
I don't think my babysitter can stay up that late.
Okay. So, I'm...
Okay, we'll take a vote. Let's take a vote.
Moosh.
Okay, so, how much, do we want to go maybe to 10:45 or 11?
Okay, so how much, do we want to go maybe to 10:45 or 11? Would that work?
Why don't we make an extension for 11 o'clock, I'll give my suggestion then.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Commissioner Goran?
Reluctantly.
Reluctantly.
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
Yes.
And Acting Chair Gossett?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
So, we vote to go till 11:00 PM?
I was able to pull up the condition of approval, and it was actually, we meant to reference condition B2, which is the 30-foot easement.
Thank you. Several residents brought up floodplain. Is this property in a floodplain? Is it a FEMA-mapped floodplain?
No, we could, we looked at that and we confirmed that it's not in a designated flood zone.
Is it a floodplain?
It's not within the floodplain. It's, what was the terminology? It was unclassified, so.
Okay, so it didn't have any designation?
No designation, no.
So, I'm going to move over to design compatibility. This is my perspective. The current design has a look and feel of an institutional facility. It resembles an executive conference center, a hotel, receiving lobby, sorry, outside area with a carport. I, it just doesn't seem to fit with the style of the, and the architecture of their surrounding neighborhoods adjacent to this property and to the south, and to the east, and to the west. It just doesn't fit. And I just wonder, honestly, when I looked at the property, and I'm not a gambler and I'm not a horse racer or whatever, but I just felt I was going, I was sitting at a clubhouse watching the Derby, the Kentucky Derby of some kind, wearing, you know, I just had that feel. So, I'm just not sure if this is a good fit. But that's my personal perspective. Let's see, let me see, I've got a couple of other things that I.
Through the chair, are we having clarifying questions or deliberations?
I thought that we would focus on clarifying questions before we got into comments.
So, okay, so the question here for clarification is, does the city staff, can the city staff tell me what type of architecture this is that would, that is compatible with the neighboring architecture?
Yeah, I'd be happy to start us off, and, you know, maybe other staff can jump in and add to it. This is a contemporary-style home, and the idea is that, at least I think, you know, what the design team that our applicant assembled, the approach was to be compatible with other contemporary homes that exist in the, you know, the Miramar neighborhood to the north, including along Roosevelt and Washington, you know, both streets have several homes that are more contemporary style. Clearly, there's some gray area here. Design guidelines are certainly open to interpretation, and I think the goal is to try and find substantial conformance, not necessarily compliance. So, and hey, if, you know, if the commission thinks that this is, you know, on one side of the, of the substantial conformance equation as opposed to the other, you know, that's certainly up for, up to hear it, so. The Architectural Advisory Committee, they were, you know, with some minor suggestions, they were supportive of it, but ultimately, this decision falls with the Planning Commission, so.
Thank you. With regard to the neighborhood meetings, do you know, Scott, how the neighborhood was informed of these meetings and how many residents attended these meetings?
Yes, and I, I think I mentioned in my presentation that there were two, and I was, I'm a little bit wrong about that. There were actually three, and I, I attended the first one, which was in a, you know, sort of a downpour deluge, and, you know, rightfully so, nobody showed up except for me, and I think one of our AAC members, she drove by, and it was just, you know, pouring buckets. So, at that time, the applicant decided to reschedule, and he held two other meetings on-site, and I was not able to attend the second two. But I believe he did have several folks attend and prepare a flyer that he went around and, you know, knocked on doors, and I think there were, you know, coffee and bagels and sort of, you know, there to answer questions, and, you know, the applicant can provide additional details on the neighborhood courtesy meetings, so.
Thank you. And I have three last general questions, and I'd just like to have some kind of clarification with, actually, I'm not going to ask these questions now, I'm done. Thank you.
Would you like to go? Okay. Go ahead, Chair Hernandez.
I just wanted to go back to, I mean, Commissioner Johannes raised an interesting point with respect to drainage, and it's a similar point that's been raised by many of the neighbors. And we've been provided with evidence of this, and I've asked this question several times, but the evidence I see is that the land is wet for a lot of time, which is, there's standing water on the property for significant periods of time, which is one of the three criteria that the Army Corps of Engineers uses to establish a wetland. And the neighbors are raising this issue as well of, hey, as a layperson, this looks like wet land, is it not in fact already a wetland? And Commissioner Johannes has raised the issue of Beechwood, right? So, there's several issues going on here. The biggest one to me is not, is it wetland or not? I trust the engineering standards. It's more of, we have an applicant who has two parcels effectively, the parcel that he's applying for a project for now, and a project to the south. And we are approving a project today where we're going to divert stormwater to his other project. Is the applicant willing to indemnify and hold the city harmless for the creation of a wetland as a result of this project? Because to me, we could be creating a problem for ourselves here if we're not careful. And so, that's the question I have, is, it's a bigger picture issue of how does this affect the overall pace of development?
Through the chair, I'm happy to respond to that. The, there would be the standard indemnification condition of approval by which the applicant indemnifies the city for any claim resulting from the city's approval of the project. So, I think the applicant has, would necessarily indemnify the city for that.
Can I follow up on that? Is that in the condition of approval? Because I noticed at the very end, it said, hold, the city would be held harmless.
Yes, that's the one.
Is that it? Okay, so I did read that. Okay, thank you.
So, I do have a question. It's just a clarification of what legal terms is. Indemnification and hold harmless are two different things, correct?
Yes, we sometimes use them interchangeably, but you would have to look at the exact terms of the condition, which in this case is a very broad hold harmless provision that says they will, well, actually, I think it is, even though it might be named hold harmless, I think it is also indemnification because they pay for the city's defense as well.
Are there any more questions from my fellow commissioners?
I have a couple, and thank you Hazel for all those questions that you had, because I had a lot of those same questions, so we don't have to talk about that. But Jill, I spoke to you earlier today about the trees, and my concern to you, Jill, was like, why the city requires the applicant to plant Monterey Cypress and various pines that we know sometimes will fall over during the storms and have shallow root systems? And my concern is that the root system will interfere with utilities on the property, like the plumbing, sewer lines and such. So, I know, Jill, you said you were going to look into that. And that, I think, was the only other different question that I had. I don't think I had anything, and I did have a question about, that all my questions were actually answered because of Hazel's questions.
So, thank you, Acting Chair Gossett. I think we're going to need two or three folks to answer your question. I did look into the settlement agreement that we discussed on the phone. That settlement agreement has kind of hands tied on that further restricted area, which is on the westernmost portion of the parcel where it narrows down. In that area, the settlement agreement specifies that if there are trees removed, that the replacements need to be of the same species of what trees were removed, and in that case, there are Monterey pines, and in particular, that had suffered down in that area, and I think there might also be Cypress. I would, from that point, defer to Scott, who's done more of the review of the landscape plan, and then also note that the landscape architect is here and can probably talk to you more about the details of those root systems and why species were selected and the locations where they were placed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Jill is absolutely correct. Since this application was submitted, we had several trees die on the, sort of the western portion of the lot, and I believe they were all Monterey pine. And we've found, and the landscape architect can provide more clarification than I can on this, but I, I think there is some reluctance to plant Monterey pine, given the pine pitch canker and, and other things that have been attacking the Monterey pines. And I think that's the primary reason that the landscape plan, you know, for the bigger trees are Monterey Cypress. But I would encourage, you know, to the landscape architect to provide additional clarification.
Oh, do you mind? Can you come up? Oh, thank you.
I'm happy to do so. I wasn't sure if there was an invitation to come back to the diocese.
Oh, okay, thank you.
There are only two types of, two species of trees that are identified as new on the plans. Those are the Monterey Cypress and Liana Thamnus Floribundus, the Catalina Ironwood tree, which is a native tree. It's not necessarily native to the county, but it is well-established here in the county. I could think of different places where that's been installed here on the coast side. We're using the Catalina Ironwood adjacent to the house. It's a small, narrow, clean tree, a good small patio tree for residential landscapes. We have, I believe, four Monterey Cypress trees, and they are far away from the house. They're actually placed to fill in some of the gaps along the old hedgerow. So, they're further to the west of the property, where perhaps there were trees, there were Cypress trees there at one point, but have since died. Even if those trees were to grow 80, 100 feet tall, they don't appear to be in any danger of falling over on any structures. I can assure you, there are no Monterey pines proposed. In 18 years of doing projects here on the coast, the only time I've ever had Monterey pines on a plan is with a red X for removal, so.
Okay.
There won't be any of those on the project.
Okay, thank you. That's it? That's it for me?
Can we discuss? Because we only have half an hour.
Sure.
Really not.
We only have half an hour.
There's so much to discuss.
Do you want to start then, Commissioner Goran?
I could make it really quick.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so, with my limited design expertise, I would say, this house design is so much better than the previous designs, that it fits the landscape better, fits the neighborhood better. I understand people still have concerns with it or whatever, but from my point of view, I think that's been a major improvement. I think that the real issue here is that we have an urgent problem. If you look at, look at Google Earth and just look at that area, and you see where the coastal trail has been destroyed, right? And you follow that up, and there's a line, a green line of trees and shrubs that go right to this property. And so, and that's, so there's, I mean, there's ditches everywhere, there's, but anyway. So, saying that the water isn't going to go into the Pullman Ditch doesn't really solve the problem. And the problem is, we have, I, we have an urgent situation that needs to be fixed. And when you have an urgent situation that needs to be fixed, adding to that, or possibly adding to that, is problematic and actually goes against the LCP. So, there's several places in LCP where it says, you're not allowed to do that. So, to me, no matter how good the project is and how nice the house is, I can't say yes to this. I mean, I just can't. I mean, you can't add more water to this huge problem, and it's going to get worse. Everyone knows it's going to get worse. So, it's nice that there's a promise of this, you know, easement, but again, to me, that's not a plan. That's, that's like a paper promise. That's like, oh, if you approve the project, yeah, we have this area that you could have access to. And that doesn't fix the problem to me. And so, between like not having a plan to fix it, having these drywells that may or may not work and some kind of magical, and, and just adding to the amount of impervious surface that leads to more problems, I just don't see, I mean, I see that that building here would violate the LCP. And if you want to do chapter and verse, I can do that too. But that's, I feel like that's the main point. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
So, I think there's six elements that we need to address. I think the public input, some people feel like their input was not collected. There were meetings that were noticed. Scott has attested to the fact that he was present for them, and I think that there's certainly this meeting, I've been in several meetings on this project where the public has provided quite a bit of input on the project, so I don't think that's really a real issue. From a visual resources perspective, I don't have any issues with the visual impact on this project from Highway 1. From the crown of Highway 1 looking west, I don't see an issue. From the coastal trail looking east to the bluff tops, I don't see an issue. I've been by many times with the old story poles, current story poles, I'm familiar with that, so I don't see any issues with the visual resources. The natural resources, again, I don't have any real issue, I don't have any issues with that. And design compatibility to Commissioner Goran's perspective, this is dramatic improvement in the project, okay? There are many. There are many examples on Kelly Avenue in Miramar, similar designs of this postmodern type of design. It's not the first time we've seen this. You may not like it, but I think the, if I look at the overall plan, the landscape plan, how it puts it into the neighborhood, how it gets rid of the invasive species, how it deals with drainage, I think that the design, I'm totally, and, and based on the Architectural Review Committee's feedback, I don't have any issues with it. Because they've looked at it, they've edited it, they've given feedback, and I don't really care about the, the, you know, glass versus brass versus wood in terms of the balcony. That's, that's really an implementation detail that should be left to the applicant, whatever they want to do. Maintaining plexiglass or glass on the coast is a pain in the neck. I do agree with Chair Gorn though. I, I think that when this project came before us before, there was a proposal for a basement. And there was a question of, well, how is this going to affect the way that water flows below the ground? Layperson's interpretation of how, that discussion. The applicant has now removed the base, the basement from the project. But in the beginning of this year, we had floods we've never seen before. And we had it multiple times. We had two sets of floods happen this year, and this particular neighborhood was impacted by it. And so, I'm very concerned about approving any more projects in this neighborhood, in this area, until we get a handle on what is the appropriate standard to apply to this neighborhood. And yeah, we've approved six other projects since we started. Okay, fair enough. If this had been, if this project had originally conformed and been the same kind of project as the things that were approved, I don't think we'd have an issue. It probably would have moved forward. But the reality is, the project before us today sits in a situation that has changed substantially in the last six years. And I'm, I'm, I would at least think we should think about a continuance, so we can think about this a little bit more. That would be my suggestion, would be to, maybe we continue this project, so we can think about, have the city staff look at this, take into account the visual and feedback that's come forward. I do not disagree with the assessment of Tom Conroy or Maz of, the way this is designed, it's going to push water away from the Pullman Ditch. But that, I, I trust their technical assessments of it, because they are technical experts. It's more of, we have a situation on the ground today that is problematic and urgent. And I think there are things we may want to consider and maybe just, just not stop the project, but just hit pause and take the time to address the neighbors' concerns of, what are we going to do before we put more development into this area? How are we going to address the urgent need that the neighbors feel today before we approve something else? And that's, that's my perspective. I'll, I'll stop there and let others comment.
Thank you Chair Hernandez. Commissioner Johannes?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. So, I will be quick also. Thank you for organizing all those inputs, Chair Hernandez. In terms of design, I'm, even though I know we have the discretion, I did read the architectural report, and they work, they did say that the home had a commercial feel rather than a residential feel, so I am a little concerned about that statement in their report. I'm also worried about the current state of the flooding, that, as, as Commissioner Gorn said, it's an urgent problem that needs to be solved. And I don't see how allowing another home to be built in that area is not going to be impacted itself by the flooding that's going on. And so, I'll, I'll just stop with that. That's, that's my input. Thank you. And I would support a continuance.
I have a question on the continuance. If we continue this, what does this mean? I mean, what are we asking staff to do, or the applicant to do? I, I'm not really understanding that.
Go ahead Chair Hernandez.
I mean, I, I'd like to just have a conversation with city staff here, because I'd like to get their feedback on, like, the urgent issue. I mean, Chair Gorn has raised policy concerns under the LCP around development in an area where we have evidence that says it's problematic. I mean, I, I'd love to get city staff's perspective, because the continuation, from my perspective, would be to allow city staff to take the measured time they need to come back and give us feedback on this project. So, I'd direct it back to city staff.
Through the chair. I think it's the, it's, it's "to be continued to a time uncertain" is what the language was. And just for the record, for city staff, so, I mean, it is, it's, it's 719 on policies. The 712 policy of site-specific shoreline hazardous valuation. And you can, I mean, it's right there. It speaks directly to this issue. So, I mean, once that's, it, I, I don't really see how it can be resolved in a short period of time to build a house. And I'm sorry about that. But I just don't see that it's, for a planning commission to, you need to plan. Thanks.
Does anyone else have further comments?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Second.
The applicant would like to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. And assuming this is regarding the motion to continue in potentially perpetuity. I agree with Commissioner Gorn. This is sad. After seven years, apparently we're unprepared to make a decision based on anecdotal evidence and not the staff recommendation, not all of the engineering that's gone into this. We respectfully request that you not continue. If it is the will of the Planning Commission on behalf of the city to not allow development on this site, to make it a receiver site for off-site floodwaters, we deserve a denial so that we can seek out a fair process. Thank you.
Scott, a good point.
I mean...
But I am reluctant to do that.
We're, 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 look, I would, this is a complicated project. And I don't think, I've already put my position on here. I'm comfortable with the design. I think the applicant has done a yeoman's job trying to meet the community halfway. They've got a perspective on what they want the house to look like. Some people don't like that, but they don't have to change their project. I am not advocating that we make this a receiver site for water. I am simply, to your point, Chair, Commissioner Gorn, trying to address the issue of drainage. And I want to make sure that before we potentially make something, and I've heard the feedback, I've heard the testimony from the city engineer, I, I think some members of this commission are concerned about the drainage issue not being addressed, and the neighbors are concerned about it as well. And, and I, I do not believe there's like zero impact to drainage. There's always, any development has some impact to drainage, and we've seen a lot of that. So, I, it's, it's, this is, I would like to set a date sooner, if city staff would like to be able to address the concerns. I, I, again, my question was, city staff, do you have any feedback on changing the date? That was what I wanted to get their feedback on, is, is there, maybe it's not even a date uncertain, maybe we can set a time this year where we can come back to this project. I'm not trying to set this aside forever. That is not the objective. The objective is to just address the concerns that have been raised by Chair Gorn, or former Chair Gorn. I just want to make sure that we're taking the time to address these issues.
I, I do have a question, because the applicant's representative spoke. It's occurring to me that if, if it is a denial they're seeking so that they can push forward another proposal for a, an area for detention, water retention or detention, is that what you were trying to, to say? I, I was, I'm a little confused. You would, instead of continuance, you would rather have a denial so that you can push through another project that would most likely be what the city would want, a retention? Please clarify.
Sure. Thank you Commissioner. No, the, the, the project has been designed to be compliant with every city standard, code, policy, recommendation. There, there are no more, you know, hidden opportunities here. What we're looking for is a venue where we can get a fair hearing. Seven years in front of the Planning Commission is not fair. And so, if we can just get a denial, whether we can get in front of the city council or some venue that, where the staff recommendation and all of our work with your engineers and our engineers can get a fair hearing.
Understood.
Through the chair. So...
Go ahead.
I, I don't think that a date uncertain is in perpetuity, and I think that that's just the language we use to say that we want to look at this project and talk to city staff and have it, and resubmit. So, I don't really see that we need to set a date. I don't really need to see that we need to deny this project. That's not what we were saying. That's not what we were about. And I think, you know, the motion to, to see this on a date uncertain seems like the right thing to do. That would, my point of view.
Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you Acting Chair Gossett. For the record, I, I don't have a position on whether it should be continued or denied or approved. This is just to assist staff. If it is continued, I think it's a little unclear as to what type of information we should bring back. And I think Commissioner Johannes raised some excellent questions that could be a path, specifically about the sizing of the dry wells, where would the water go, would it perk into the ground? Those are questions we could get answers to in consultation with the applicant's geotechnical and civil engineers that would at least focus our efforts somewhat. So, I'm just throwing that out if you do decide to continue. Again, I'm not advocating one way or the other.
Could I ask you a question based on what you just said? So, if you were to do studies to investigate the soils, the areas, the drainage, would you be studying that at a ten-year standard that we know fails? Or...
I think we could look at a range of scenarios that would address specifically the questions that Commissioner Johannes raised. And maybe the, this design is adequate, maybe it's not. But I think that would address the, the technical questions. Doesn't resolve the neighborhood feelings, it doesn't address Rocket Farms, but it, it would be something we could accomplish reasonably expeditiously.
With regard to Rocket Farms, I understand, and again, apparently, my understanding is, years ago, maybe in 2000, between the years 2003 to 2005 perhaps, there was discussion at the city level with nurserymen's exchange at the time, where there was some kind of verbal agreement that was reached to, to resolve the issues regarding the flow of, the flow from Rocket, from the now Rocket Farms down through Pullman Ditch. There was a very strong belief at the time that nurserymen's exchange was going to comply with all the requirements and needs. And I think there were maybe some settlement agreements between one or two property owners at the time with nurserymen's exchange. Since then, the property was sold, and Rocket Farms now has kind of like shut down their walls and not wanting to participate with discussion in the city. I'm wondering if the city, I, I know city staff has tried, and they have not returned the calls. I'm wondering if there's another avenue that perhaps the city attorney could suggest in which the city staff can provide, you know, some, some kind of carrot to Rocket Farms to at least answer phone calls or provide a response.
Through the chair.
That's not this project.
Yeah, through the chair. That's, that's the same thing. It's not, it's, it's not this project. It's the same thing. It's like, it's not this project. Like, we can't ask the applicant to go deal with somebody else's stuff.
We're not asking the applicant. I'm asking, in the process of continuing this, this item, city staff, in addition to city staff working on the things that we're asking them to continue, we're asking the city staff to work separately with Rocket Farms, so that when they come back to us, they might have more information to give us in, to help solve this issue with this project.
Let me, I'll put it this way. Regardless of this project and this applicant, we're still looking at other avenues to move forward. And nothing to do with this project, we're still working on that.
So, through the chair.
Please. Yes.
My recommendation would be to address the technical issues that have been raised around the dry well, the drainage. Just, 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 let's just get real specific. And ideally, to Commissioner Johannes's point, we'd love to see a big picture assessment of what is being done to this area, so that the urgent problem that affects the neighbors today, we have confidence that that's being addressed. I think that's, that's the, the bigger issue. And I can't, maybe they can be on the agenda for the same meeting, maybe they're not the same item, because it's, it's difficult to tie this specifically to this project. But I, I would just, I would like to see a plan, like, and I hear you Maz, I, I understand you're trying to address this. There, unfortunately, before you got here, there have been many projects that have, people have made commitments to do things and they failed. Beechwood is a great example. And we don't want to create more problems. And so, we, as a, as a commission, our objective is, let's address the technical issues specific to this project. We'd also love to see the big picture perspective of what is being done to address the plumbing in the neighborhood, so that people don't have to worry about their homes floating away. Because that's what the neighbors are concerned about. It's not about, there's, really, the design's not an issue, all the other issues. There, there's no other material issue here, from my perspective, other than the drainage. there's no other material issue here, from my perspective, other than the drainage.
If I could add one thing, just so, for city staff direction, um, I would like to know why this does not violate LCP. So, if we can, if you can get to that point, then we can look at this again. That'd be great. Thank you.
I agree with that.
Through the chair, just a clarifying question on that. Could you state again the policy number? I had a hard time hearing you before.
Uh, 712. It's on 7, it's in 719, it's 712.
712 and 719?
Policy 712, Site-Specific Shoreline Hazards Evaluation.
Oh, 712. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to, um, vote on the motion? Bridgette?
So, it's to a date uncertain, Claire? Commissioner, Commissioner, sorry, I was just, Commissioner, uh, Johannes?
Yes.
Commissioner Goran?
Uh, yes, please.
Acting Chair Gossett?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Should approve 4-0, to continue to a date uncertain.
So, we're at 10:55, we continue to 11. We have three commissioners left, and I think we have one item left on the agenda. If Commissioner Goran needs to leave, I think we can continue the meeting if my fellow commissioners agree to continue it.
I'm okay to continue it? Okay, go ahead.
But I'd like to take a two-minute break.
Sure, okay, all right. Yeah, because we, we would still have a quorum, so you could, uh, I, I, I don't know. They have... No.
Yeah, the, the quorum needs, the quorum needs to be present, and, um... I, I will note that, I, we hope, we believe, and we put it last, because we think this is a...
I'll stay.
...fast item. And I will spare you the director's report.
Speed, speed through it? Okay, all right.
Can we just do it without...
Can we make a...
Okay, two-minute break.
Can we...
And, I, I'm not gonna even leave the chair, so I can bang the gavel for two minutes.
All right, go.